Well, good evening. Welcome to everyone here. Some haven't been here before, and I'm glad to see some new faces. We have a regular meeting tonight, and I ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry. Councilmember Budge. Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander will be joining us shortly. And Mayor McGarvey.
Here. Thank you. And I ask our city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, April 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 20th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Well, next, we're going to have Girl Scout Troop 928 to lead the color guard, and then Girl Scout Troop Number 499 to lead us in the pledge. And then you're invited to remain standing, and I'll have the invocation by Tom Jones from First Baptist Church to give the invocation. Please stand.
Color guard advance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post your colors.
Well, if that's not a tough act to follow, well done, ladies. I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. The congregants of First Baptist pray for you consistently and regularly as a body. Would you allow me to pray at this time? Father God, we give thanks for our opportunity to come here in this chamber this evening. For this purpose, Lord, we would ask that your favor be here and be among our city council. Father, we pray, I pray, and ask that you would give them wisdom to make wise choices. Father, they are here because of love of community, which means for love of their fellow neighbor. And so, Lord, it is something that they take seriously, this charge that has been given them. Give them the wisdom and the discernment necessary to exercise the duties that they've been given, for the betterment of the community, for the betterment of their neighbor. So, Lord, we pray for this, in Jesus Christ's name, amen. Thank you.
That was wonderful. I want to thank the girls on both troops for everything that they did this evening. You guys did a great job. Thank you. Great. Now, I go on to item number five. Ask Asha Kryling, management technician of the city of Rancho Cordova, as the presentation of the 29th Annual Creek Week results.
I'll just wait for my slides to show up. Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and Rancho Cordova City Council members. My name is Asha Kryling. I'm a management technician for the stormwater program in the Public Works Department. In previous years, to commemorate Creek Week, we've presented volunteer groups such as the two Girl Scout troops here tonight, proclamations, and given presentations at city council meetings to announce Creek Week activities for the year in advance of Creek Week. But this year, I wanted to make, to be able to share with you photos and highlights from the event after it happened, so thank you for having me this evening. So, April 4th through the 13th was the 29th Annual Creek Week event, which is organized by nonprofit organization Sacramento Area Creeks Council. It's an area-wide volunteer effort to educate the public about our urban waterways and pick up trash. It all wrapped up on Saturday, April 13th, and the city has sponsored and participated in the events since 2013, and I've helped coordinate the events for the past two years. So, just a map to give you an idea of the area that we covered this year. We started off our activities on Saturday with a nature walk at our Bear Hollow Stormwater Basin in that yellow circle. We also did a cleanup event at Cordova Creek near Moraine Circle, where it enters the county regional parks land and where it becomes a naturalized creek. We also cleaned up our Recycle Road Basin, shown in the purple circle, Tributary Horn Road, Tributary 1 South White Rock Road, just around the corner from here, City Hall. We did a Cordova Vineyards Neighborhood Cleanup in partnership with the VINS. And lastly, we did a neighborhood cleanup and creek cleanup in the Stone Creek neighborhood. So, here's Bear Hollow again. Andrew, one of our on-call biologists with Doc and Engineering, and Zara with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, conducted a nature walk on early Saturday morning for a small group of people, and just got to educate attendees about the tree planting efforts we've had at the basin and talk about birds and other critters that have taken up residence at the basin. I heard it went well, and I'd love to do more of these types of educational opportunities for the public. Next, we did a cleanup at Cordova Creek near Moraine Circle, as I talked about earlier. This is the first time we've cleaned this section of Cordova Creek. This is where the creek enters county regional parks property and feeds into that naturalized portion of Cordova Creek before it goes to the American River. Volunteers entered at Dido Way onto the Cordova Meadows levee, which is one of two levees that the city maintains. I heard a few people said it didn't look like there was a lot of trash in the creek, but once they got into the creek, they stumbled upon quite a few pieces of trash. Next, we did a cleanup at Recycle Road Stormwater Basin, which is just off Sunrise in the auto dismantler area. It's one of our detention basins that collects runoff from the surrounding watershed that flows to Morrison Creek. Employees from a company called TRC, they have an office in Rancho Cordova, as well as other neighborhood volunteers, were excited to help out this event, and there's always interesting things to find at this stormwater basin, a lot of auto parts that end up in the basin that we're thankful this volunteer group were able to pull out. They did a great job. Next, we did a cleanup at Tributary 1 Horn Road. That's our waterway that runs along Highway 50 and eventually crosses Folsom Boulevard and flows into the American River. We've been cleaning this site for the past few years for Creek Week. Brad Finlay from our Public Works Department and his mom, visiting from Canada, served as site leaders this year. The group found an injured turkey that was probably hit by a car right before the cleanup site, which some of the volunteers, the younger volunteers tended to gave water and took it to the Wildlife Care Association for it to be rescued, so that was a nice story. It's a steep site, so folks were willing to get down on a ladder and climb into the channel to pick up trash, and they did a great job. Next, Tributary 1 South White Rock Road, not too far from here. Troop Number 499 led this site again this year. Thank you to them for doing a great job and for being here to perform the pledge tonight. Like Tributary 1 at Horn Road, this is a steep waterway that requires ladders to get in and rope, but volunteers seem to enjoy the adventure.
What was that? Yeah, we can't get that.
Some sort of crab. I'm not quite sure.
That's a granddaddy.
Not sure if it was alive or not. Next, we did a cleanup site in the Cordova Vineyards Neighborhood. This was wrapped into Creek Week, and I'm glad we got to partner with VINS on this event. VINS approached the community engagement team here at the city to collaborate on litter pickup events, and we decided that Creek Week would be a great way to incorporate their litter pickup efforts into a broader regional event, and they removed quite a bit of trash. So, thank you, VINS. Stone Creek Park, we did a neighborhood and creek cleanup. This site was also a site led by VINS. A lot of volunteers showed up to this site, and they covered a lot of ground, cleaning Stone Creek Park, Morrison Creek, which flows around the park, and also the streets around the neighborhood. I want to thank Kellyanne from VINS for leading this site and leading a large group of volunteers. So, Creek Week results. We had about 70 volunteers and over 2,000 pounds of trash removed this year, a little bit more than last year, and still counting all the numbers, but region-wide, we expect there to be 2,000 volunteers and over 200 tons of trash removed from waterways throughout the region. In addition to the sites hosted by the city of Rancho Cordova, cleanup events were happening all across the region. I want to thank Girl Scout Troop Number 928 for participating in the cleanups happening in Mather, in the Vernal Pools, and Morrison Creek. There they are. And lastly, I want to thank our community engagement and facilities staff, as well as our MCE contract maintenance staff for helping to make this a successful event, and everyone who came out to clean up Rancho Cordova and our waterways. Now, I want to call up some members from both Girl Scout troops to help present our city council members and city manager this year's Creek Week mug. Thank you.
Well, we have the council to go on down with the, have some pictures with the scouts. Wait for a moment while they, everybody's getting organized here. I want to thank everyone who was working on this and did the wonderful work for annual Creek Week, over a ton. That's hard to believe, but it's unfortunately what it is, so, all right. On item 5.2, we call on Joe Cuff, and the building official of the city of Rancho Cordova, and I ask our council member Linda Budge to proclamation, give the proclamation recommending staff may, Building and Safety Month.
One of my favorite groups of people. Okay, are we here?
Oh, yes.
Well, come over here. Okay. Okay, guys, so, this is a proclamation given in recognition of Building Safety Month. We do this every May. Are you going to build a house out in the lobby again?
We can.
Oh.
It's unfavorable.
Oh, the house is unfavorable. Okey-dokey. So, whereas the city of Rancho Cordova is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, the buildings, and the infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that makes up our community is achieved through the devotion of the vigilant guardians in the building safety and fire prevention, our officials, our architects, our engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and all the others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment, to create and implement the highest quality codes that protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national volunteer consensus codes and standards developing organization, you belong to that?
Yes.
Okay. Our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And yes, you all are the ones who say, "If you have to have a building permit, if you go to Home Depot and you buy a new hot water heater." There are some things that just have to have a building permit. Whereas no code, no confidence, for exactly that reason, is the theme of Building Safety Month 2019, and it encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps that everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment, and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. So, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 is Building Safety Month, and we encourage all of our citizens to join with their communities in participating in Building Safety Month activities. And so, I'm going to present this, Joe, to you and your team with the comment that the one takeaway from all the articles that have been written in the major local newspaper about the homes that were saved and the homes that were lost in Paradise is the age at which they were built and the codes under which they were built.
Agreed.
And the fact that the new homes with new building codes had a 100% better chance of being saved than the older homes built under previous codes or lack of codes.
Absolutely.
So, thank you all very much. Okay, so, are there activities, and do you want to talk about them? And I have to also tell you that I have a grandson who's participating in the construction classes at Cordova High and enjoying it, every minute of it. They made the dog houses that went up to Paradise. They've been making birdhouses, and they're going to participate in that small house competition.
I might be judging that.
Great. I'll tell you which, you can tell which one he is.
We are going to have some activities. We're currently in the planning process of putting those together, and hopefully we'll have some announcements shortly.
He's actually, he's actually bought.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Joe, and your crew, and for all the safety you do in Rancho Cordova to help us make sure that everything is made as it should be. Okay, moving on to item number six, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers who will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less, and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. And ask our city clerk if we have any cards.
I have one speaker card for no items on tonight's agenda. Sharon Judy, would you please come forward? You'll have three minutes.
My name's Sharon Judy. I live in Rancho Villa. I'm going to read it and just leave it at that, because it pertains to what you have in front of you. At the city council meeting of April 1st of this year, you had a discussion on code enforcement with staff. Why is it that you didn't find it necessary to allow input from the public? Just because you allowed some at the January 8th gathering shouldn't mean none of our input isn't essential, because it is. This appears to be just a bit arrogant on your part, sorry to say. We, the public, live here, too. Educating us is essential, so is our participation in decision-making. Again, I'm sorry, but this is not only arrogant on your part, but it is crossing the line to elitist. Why do you all have the right to make decisions for us without being asked how we might feel about what you decide? Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other cards?
I have no other cards.
Okay, well, then I'll ask Donald Terry and council reports.
Didn't have any commissions or two-by-twos. We seemed to knock those all out in March, so I think the only thing I would report is we had our final steering committee meeting for a cap-to-cap, even though it's still, like, four weeks away, but it's the latest time that they've had it in the year. So, we had our last one this past Friday. Things are moving along. Hopefully, everyone has booked. There's only a few spots left if you are planning on going. I know we're going to have one or two members on my community resources team, because there is no economic development team this year. I don't know. I wasn't on that committee. I'm not speaking to it. I just know that they disbanded it and put it into the rest of the teams, and so we've all inherited some extra people. The argument was something along the lines of economic development is a part of every one of the other committees, so we'll just have everybody split up into those. I don't know. But if you're coming to the community resources team, we are going to have a very robust few days, including having a policy forum on Tuesday at 4:00 in the hotel that will include the executive director of the Interagency on Homelessness, the California Secretary for Housing and Business Oversight, Secretary Podesta, and then Daryl Steinberg will be speaking about local resources for homelessness and housing. And we're still figuring out who's going to draw the short straw and moderate that panel, and I'm praying it's not me. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, now, Linda.
Okay, so, George Washington Carver sent their entire junior class over to do a tour of City Hall, and we did a mock city council for them and had the best time. We did, in the past, when we have done elementary school kids, we have talked about the development of our chicken ordinance, but this time, we talked about RVs and boats and trailers in the front yard and on the driveways, and we divided into two groups of people, those who were for it and those who were against it, and we asked the kids to take the roles of the council members, the city staff, the city attorney, the clerk, everybody, and we had a wonderful discussion, a very lively discussion, and it was a little bit challenging for the kids this time, because we had more people who were, who were on one side than the other. So, we actually split them and said, okay, even though you feel one way about it, we need you to go over here and sit on the other side. So, they really, we challenged their ability to come up with a view that expressed the other perspective that they didn't hold, and that was really absolutely fascinating to watch them develop those. We've been having interviews here at City Hall with people who are experts in sports activities and arts and culture activities in terms of what would be practical and logical, and could we expect to, to put into our new civic center as we go forth in the development of that. Garrett and I attended the Park District's volunteer luncheon last week, and I have to comment once again that the staff at the senior center is the most incredibly creative group of people in terms of developing a theme and implementing that theme. This year, it was a superhero theme. One year, it was a Busy Bee theme. One year, it was a circus theme. They, they are absolute genius at decorating and, and, like I said, implementing the particular theme. And then I was asked to be on a panel for an annual seminar, a spring seminar that's put on by Bender Rosenthal, who does a lot of appraisal work for the city. put on by Bender Rosenthal, who does a lot of appraisal work for the city. This particular one was about the process of adopting a resolution of necessity if we need to acquire right-of-way for a public works project of some sort. We had some city staff there, and the panel, the five panelists were the gentleman who is the deputy director at CADA, the Capital Area Development Authority, Vice Mayor Patrick Hume in Elk Grove, and two attorneys from BBK, Best Best and Krieger. And we wrapped up the day again with an extremely lively discussion, full of attorneys eloquently emoting about why their client's property was, had been in the family for 75 years and the local jurisdiction should keep their hands off of it. So, but it was absolutely educational. There was so much to the process that I personally had no idea of, and I was pleased that our city staff was there to go through the process also. And then finally, I want to express everybody's heartfelt sympathy with everyone who is from France and in France at the tragedy that happened at Notre Dame today. I know that the world is shocked, and we are shocked, and really upset, and, and so our, our hearts go out to everybody who was either, who was affected either personally or sympathetically. So, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Garrett?
Met with some of the business leaders in the region at City Hall. They're very excited with how the direction of the city's going, see a lot of good things. A lot of the business community is seeing a lot of growth due to what's going on here, and so they're very happy to move businesses in here. It's very hard to find, all space that has, commercial space attached to it is basically been taken, so there is no space of warehouses in it in the city under probably $2 to $3. Our space in general is now classed higher than Gold River, so people would rather move into Rancho, and the space in Gold River is actually cheaper than any space that's classified in the city of Rancho. Just so, that's the accomplishment. Went down to downtown SAC to start off the census. Went to Network Chamber, Rancho Cordova Chamber Breakfast, which was good to see all the new businesses coming too. Very excited about going to cap-to-cap and then eventually revitalizing the Economic Development Group. Went to the STA. I found out that their tax revenue structure was off, and Rancho Cordova will be receiving an extra $265,000 to the overall budget, and so Cyrus should be excited about that. So more money down the way coming towards you, and we have an excellent chance at getting, since it's one of those lobbying things, we're actually going to try to get, position ourselves well to be able to get more money towards White Rock Road. So really excited about that. Went to go to, of course, the Park District, celebrate volunteers, which is always awesome, and ate some popcorn, and it was fun. And then I saw someone that could swing that looked more lively than I've seen a lot of people. When she swung in the middle of it, I think she was, she's probably in her 70s, 80s, that was, yeah, more springly than a lot of us. And then, very, springly. Very excited about the sports and arts coming into Rancho. You know, excited about the opportunity of whatever the group basically decides what you citizens want, but really looking forward to this new opportunity.
That's it? I got the, down, springly. Yes, thank you.
Springly, word of the day.
David?
Just got two items I'll report on. One is the Secag board did our retreat right here in Rancho Cordova for I don't know what reason, but as board chair, it was nice to be able to move them here to Rancho for that event. We did it at the Marriott. Happened last Friday, so hopefully they filled up some tanks with gas or saw the need that we had along Folsom Boulevard for investment, that sort of thing. Interesting outcome, and this is not the official outcome of the retreat, but an observation. They did, you know, one of those exercises where they give everyone money and then you decide where you're going to spend the money. It's not scientific, it's not perfect, but it's a really interesting measure of what's on people's minds on the Secag board. And there were about, I don't know, 30 priorities listed on this table, and a couple of them gained enormous shares of resources from the people present. And they were both focused on infill, economic development on infill of old commercial corridors, and housing infill near old commercial corridors. Those two got more votes by far than anything else, like multiple of eight, I think, than anything else. It's interesting to see how many of our colleagues are focused on that particular set of problems and how central our issues in Rancho Cordova actually are, are in alignment to that same concern. So I'm excited by that. Secag is certainly working on that with Civic Lab, and I think there's more to come on that front. My second thing I'll report on very brief, I went and saw Romeo and Juliet, the production at Cordova High School. Outstanding production values, they are to be commended for a really great show. It was, it was awesome, and it was the original language, which is nice. Presented in sort of more modern costume and set, but they were true to the original language. So I love, I love Shakespeare, loved that production, and as I understand it, there's another, well, it's on a Measure H proposal, for more Shakespeare in Rancho Cordova this summer. So that's pretty cool. That's my report.
Oh, very good. Thank you, David. This last weekend in Reno, the Mather Veterans Village, it's called a place to call home now, has been selected and was selected to receive an outstanding achievement, Local Government Innovation Award. It was wonderful to see the people there and to see what's going on to help our veterans. People are so glad to see anything you can do to help the veterans, especially the ones that are on the street right now, and get them off the street and get them, put a roof over their head. The TLG, Transforming Local Government Conference, the innovation awards, I'm going to read this so I get it right. Innovation awards were chosen from the applications received by multi-member selection committee consisting of city and county managers, innovation officers, and academic representatives from across the United States. So to receive that from them, it was quite a wonderful thing. We have the other 50 apartments completed this summer. I was thinking we had a tie-in in May, but looks like it's taking a little bit longer than that. But by the end of this year, all of it should be completed, the Phase 3, which is the apartments, and Phase 2, which is a two-story building with those other 55 beds on the second story of that, getting more veterans off the street. It's wonderful to have that done. As you local, saw in our local paper, we are up again for a, to receive the All-America City Award. We're down to those 20 cities, we're one of the 20, and they'll pick 10 of that. So it's the National Civic League, and they'll be doing that in June, so keep your eye on that because that's going to be wonderful too. And I'm going to go back about what Linda said about Notre Dame. When my daughter was going to college, she sang in the chorus, and they went to Europe, and she sang in Notre Dame. So it was just a shock for her. We talked to her today, and it's just unbelievable to see that being destroyed as it was. I didn't know there was so much wood in that cathedral, but it was horrible to have to watch it, but there's nothing they could do about getting it down. So I heard on the news, whether it's true or not, but I imagine they will try to rebuild it. We'll see. Hope they're able to do something like that, but it was quite a shock. And that's all I've got, and I'll go into our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add, in addition to receiving the innovation award for, at the conference, we were also given a 50-minute slot to present, and Maria Nisted and Stefan Heisler from our team showcased Mather Veterans Village along with a video that's now, I believe, available on our website, and did a really great job in representing the city, and I thank you for the work they did. The only other thing I would like to mention is that I had the opportunity to attend a play written by, to perform by B Street Theater for, that was written by fourth-grade students. And two of our students from PHJ Shields were selected to have their play performed. Unfortunately, because of the time constraint, their play was not part of the presentation, but they would be presented at B Street Theater. So great energy, great work, and it's really great to see a professional team of performers to acknowledge and recognize our students. It was great to see that.
So Saturday morning, either the second Saturday or the third Saturday in May, those plays will be performed at the B Street Theater. They do it annually, and we're always invited by Rotary to attend because we do support the program. So if you want to see those plays, that's when, that would be the time to go.
Right, yeah. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on to item number nine, consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for the individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move the consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.5.
Second.
Could we discuss 9.4? I just have a simple question. Sorry, I was slow on the draw there.
It's okay. Move approval of all items 9.1 through 9.3 and 9.5.
And the second was?
Second.
Gatewood. Thank you. Roll call for those four items. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 9.4 is an update to our ticket policy. I've looked at the red line version and the staff report. I don't quite understand the substance of the changes. They look extraordinarily minor.
They are, except for the last paragraph of the ticket policy where it talks about alternatives to policy. And it does say that there is a ticket limit of $420. That ticket limit changes periodically, so we are really using this as an opportunity to make sure that we're compliant.
So that's the primary purpose of this update?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't really see that in the staff report. It just said changes are necessary, didn't say what, which led me to wonder why. So that's the main reason, is that annual number changes?
Can I ask a question then?
Yes.
So that's the limit for the tickets that the city can provide to us for like community events? Or ones that we can take as gifts?
Well, that is an outdated number.
Okay. Because that sounds, that lines up with the FPPC rule around what we're allowed to accept anyways, which is a little bit up, but.
Per source.
But I guess, and again, I read this on Friday, I was reading this as the policy of tickets purchased by the city and provided to city council.
Correct, that is correct.
Will those be subject to FPPC rules? They would? As a gift from my employer?
No, so, so a number of years ago, the FPPC adopted a limitation on the distribution of tickets to the city that were then redistributed to public officials, and it did so in part because a number of jurisdictions had very high-dollar value events to which public officials were having very exclusive access, and, and there was a need to be able to document and track essentially the value of, of these sorts of specialty events. And so instead of having you report them individually, and public officials reporting them individually as part of their own individual Form 700 reporting, it's instead consolidated and treated as a bulk activity that then is run through the city clerk's office and kind of administered. So it actually should end up being a source of convenience to everybody who utilizes the policy because it kind of consolidates a reporting requirement that would otherwise be distributed and individualized.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll move adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 10, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to open this to public hearing and ask the city clerk if we have any cards on this.
I do not.
Anyone in the audience? All righty, thank you. Close the public hearing and.
Move item 10.1 and 10.2?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, item number 11, public hearing items, we have none. Item number 12, regular calendar items. Ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Recommendations on the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Community Enhancement Fund Grant Applications Received and Discussed Council-Led Initiatives for Consideration.
All right, thank you. And ask your council to, ask staff to report, please.
And here comes Stacy with the eight, eight-inch binder.
She can actually carry it, so that's a good sign, I guess.
It's gotten smaller.
It's only one volume too, which is remarkable.
Smaller print, though.
It's books, it's books that size are the downfall of Notre Dame.
So just give me a second to get situated. So this evening, I have Lisa Behrens with me to my right, and she is going to track any of the changes on the Excel spreadsheet once we get to that section. Daniel Leonardi, who happens to be standing over there, is going to assist once we get to the point of talking about the grant recommendations. If there's any items that you want to pull so that we can discuss in further detail, we'll go ahead and pull those and write them on the flip chart. That's to my right. So this evening, we will be sharing staff recommendations on the fiscal year 1920 Community Enhancement Fund grant applications that we received. This is going to be the first meeting in which recommendations will be discussed. In order to adopt the city budget and the final project list for the Community Enhancement Fund in early June, council will need to make all funding decisions by May 28th, and that would be to adopt the budget at that first meeting in June. And it's important to note that the recommendations were made by a multidisciplinary team of staff, and we took into account several different things, including whether or not it met the initial criteria that was established. We looked at the prioritization method that was set. We did our own research and analysis. We received feedback from stakeholders such as our educational partners. And then we also looked at the anticipated funding level that we would receive in fiscal year 1920. Of course, the final project list and the funding amount will be determined by city council, so tonight we will be sharing staff's recommendations. And just as a reminder, we received approximately $3.2 million in grant requests, and we anticipate that the community grant awards will equal approximately $2 million in total. Council has already approved approximately $375,000, and those were multi-year grant requests that were approved last fiscal year and continue into this fiscal year. The initial staff recommendations that we'll be going over in a few moments totaled $2 million, and if we add to that the other categories such as legacy, public safety, public works, and economic development, that brings it to the $8.2 million, which is equal to what we anticipate receiving in revenues in fiscal year 1920. Most of the. Most of the applications that were submitted to the city did meet the minimum established grant requirements. And then of those applications submitted, about a third of them were for organizations that we currently fund. So they were for continuation of existing projects or programs. When we looked at those applications that met the minimum requirements, we then went through a prioritization method. And some of the questions that we asked ourselves when we met as a matrix team was, did the application meet the established criteria? Is the applicant leveraging other funding resources? What's the overall return on investment? Can we measure progress? Is there duplication of programs at an intended site or with the same audience, et cetera? So you can see kind of some of those questions that we asked ourselves as we went through that process. When we get to the Excel spreadsheet that lists all the various recommendations, we have already added into that the previous initiatives that were started. So you'll see art in public places in there for $50,000, performing arts for $30,000, youth sports growth and startup fund for $30,000, field trips and assemblies at $15,000, and the local community service partnership fund at $75,000. So this just keeps it consistent with what you previously approved, and we can make changes as needed. So we're going to go ahead and transition to the Excel spreadsheet. It'll be just a moment. And just to give everybody a chance to orient themselves with what's on the screen, the application number is listed on the left, followed by the application name. And the name will also include the name of the organization that applied for the funding, and that will be listed first, followed by a colon. There's a project description. If it's already approved, it will say in bold right at the beginning, "This project is already approved." So you'll notice the first two on the screen have already been approved by council. In the next column, we list the amount of funds that were requested by the organization for that one fiscal year, followed by the amount of funds that are recommended to be funded by city staff. And in the case, again, of the first two, you'll notice that it says in the notes filled that this project is already approved. So we wouldn't be discussing those first two items since there's no further action needed. And our plan tonight is to go page by page, pausing at each page to give you an opportunity to ask questions, make comment. If there's anybody that's filled out a speaker's card to make public comment, we could also address them page by page so that we do it in a systematic manner. So there's actually four items on this page, and we'll just need to scroll down a little bit to see the fourth item. Do we have any questions or comments about the first page? Or do we have any speaker cards for the first page?
CC1, this is the prior construction arts in public places.
Yes.
It feels like we have a couple people on staff sort of deciding which art is a go and which isn't. And I would be really comfortable if that function were transferred to some kind of art council. You know, the artists we already have working with the city. If we got some sort of broad input into what artistic priorities are for art in public places. I don't know that we here necessarily want to make that decision, but you know, this one versus that one. It's sort of like choosing, I don't know, paint colors when housing is in front of us. You know, we're not great at that. But some good outside advice from, you know, people in that business would be nice.
So, I don't disagree with you. So my first question, though, with that is, there's a mosaic sign already at AMWin. So what is that one for? So, and again, we don't have to answer that tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, be prepared for what that answer would be. And I think this is a great example of where creating some sort of council or advisory board or something like that to engage with the city and with staff to select stuff like this. Because there's also been, you know, comments by other artists that didn't get funded in past years that it was all decided before we even got here, and that's just not fair. So yeah, again, I think the funding level is fine. At some point, I question some of these projects because I know we just did a big mosaic installation with the curb installations that we did at AMWin. And so, if we're kind of doubling down in the same place, I'm a little surprised. And again, you know, that was my old school district. Like, I love AMWin, and you know, I think it's a great program. I just, how good are we at spreading these across the city?
So, the description says that this particular mosaic would replace the current signage, and it would expand on the existing mosaic artwork near the school. And then there is a comment that says "Third in the category from the school district." So...
So the school district rated it high?
Yeah, we don't know. But to me, that implies that the school district did have a chance to comment on this and not knowing how many they were supposed to comment on. But number three sounds pretty high.
Well, let's also... And there's something for SAC City Unified that I can talk about later that came up on our two-by-two. But keep in mind, we have three school sites within the city that are SAC City. So we don't have...
You mean districts.
I'm sorry?
Districts.
No, there's three school sites within SAC City Unified that are in the city.
Oh, sure.
So they don't have a ton of asks imperative to Folsom Boulevard or some of the other ones. So there are opportunities to ask. And I know there's another one that the superintendent asked Garrett and I about in our two-by-two that I think would be a much higher priority than this. But then again, I don't think we need to get into the weeds here on this. I just want to, I guess I want to agree with David that I would like the idea of a separate body giving input into who gets funded. And then I'm just pointing out a question that I'm going to have at some point that I would like an answer to is, why AMWin over anywhere else in the city, considering they have a very nice mosaic sign, and they just got some mosaics installations last year? And, I mean, if we're just playing favor, you know, within the district, you know, Abraham Lincoln hasn't gotten art of any kind from the city, so...
I think we're running the risk here, too, of... And this is going to sound bad, no matter how I say it, so I'm just going to say it. Of artists finding this channel and saying, "I can employ myself through this grant." I have not been able to pull up the specifics, you know, like a budget on these applications. I hope that's not the case. And I understand that artists do need to be compensated for their work. I just think that if we had another panel reviewing this, that sort of activity could be sorted out. And they could apply other screens, like, "Are these things truly public?" That's been an issue here before. And probably a bunch of things I haven't thought of. But there ought to be, you know, a series of screens put up for how we make these decisions. Then they give us a package, and they can tell us what the rules were or the rationale was, and then we can talk about that.
Yeah. But what I would say here is, I'm thumbs up for the amount. Just how we do it, let's talk about that at some point. Maybe not tonight.
So what would help me? And it really, it probably really only applies to the school districts. But it would be really illustrative if we had the list, a separate list, from the three school districts that, you know, ranked their...
We have that information.
Okay, so if we could see that? Because like, if you go to the next page, then item one actually says it was second in a category and in the top five overall from SAC City Unified.
Yes.
But, which means obviously that we have more requests than the three schools or four schools that we actually have. Okay, so we don't know how many requests they turned in and what those rankings were. And that would be, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, then going through those recommendations, and let's see what we can do about another council or someone to help along this line. But is there anyone who wishes to change anything on that first page right now?
No, and we actually have our arts group.
Yeah, not from a funding standpoint, I'm fine with it.
It wouldn't change the dollar figure, but the selection of the projects might be altered, if that's what I'm hearing. My colleagues agree to it.
I'm fine with $50,000. We should probably revisit how we're going to spend it.
Mayor, I have three public speaker cards for this item.
Which?
In general, without speaking to a specific application or project.
Item in general being?
Community enhancement.
Oh.
So can I read off these three speaker cards and invite them to come forward?
Yes, go ahead.
First one would be Darryl Langwell. Following Darryl will be Dennis. Following Dennis will be, I think it's Jerry.
Allen.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Darryl Langwell from the Vineyards neighborhood. I've been looking through these proposed grants. And once again, I see a great many grants from public entities that I already pay taxes for to do their work. To me, this feels like double taxation to support those organizations. I have to live within a budget. Everybody out here has to live within a budget, and it seems like those places should have to live within a budget without us being double taxed for it. There are groups in here that keep requesting, they make repeat requests, and we were told that we would... The funds would be to help them get started in an area, but the city was not going to perpetually fund those different organizations. And then there's a religious entity that's requesting money, and I think that's starting to get down a real slippery slope. And there's still a lot of us that are driving on streets that are in really terrible condition. But we're north of Folsom Boulevard, so I guess that's okay.
Following Darryl will be Dennis.
Well, I'll keep this kind of short. Basically, I'm up here to say thank you to all of you for the community enhancement projects. What it does, from my perspective, I'm the... I should probably introduce myself. I'm Dennis Lamantia. I'm the president of the Rancho Cordova Little League, as well as the president of the Rancho Cordova Junior Lancers. And we, and part of the board of the RCAA, the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. And as a group, we want to thank you, I would say, for supporting all of the community enhancement. The way we use it is enhancing school and park property. So it's better for that sport, that particular youth sport. And up until now, just to give you a quick example, baseball alone, we have over 550 players. We have over 200 coaches and 100 volunteers that all benefit from this money. That's just at Cordova Lane alone. We've also enhanced, put a baseball field at Mitchell Middle School. We've done many iterations of enhancements at Cordova Gardens that helped softball and football... I mean, excuse me, softball and baseball continue and thrive while things are being rebuilt. We've actually enhanced some park property. And I'd also like to thank the park and the school district for the same thing, for cooperating with this whole thing and allowing the sports, the youth sports, to continue to use their property. And anyway, it's been great. And I wanted to thank everyone. I don't know what else to say, but it affects a lot of people and a lot of children, and it really helps the entire community. One quick thing that we heard recently, I just want to pass along, was related to Cordova Gardens. Over time, Cordova Gardens was not that attractive to the neighbors for various reasons. And after the enhancements were done there, now the feedback from the community has been that the families are actually going out to the fields and practicing with their children and using these facilities because they're so clean and friendly and so on. You know, new concrete, new fencing, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, I think I burned up my time. No, not yet. I got 40 seconds left. Anyway, thank you very much for everything to everyone.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis.
Next speaker is Jerry Allen.
Hi, I'm Jerry Allen, president of the Sacramento Valley Rugby Foundation and board member with the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. And I also wanted to come up and... It isn't much that I can add to what Dennis said. He summed it all quite well. For our sport, we put on an annual rugby event here in Rancho Cordova called the Kickoff Tournament. And we were one of the first recipients of your funding three years ago for our event. And we had lost a lot of teams due to the roughness of the fields, the gopher mounds, and the lack of care that had been given to them for many years. And so it was with your funding and cooperation with Folsom Cordova School District and labor of volunteers, we were able to upgrade those fields. And we moved it from... The enrollment of teams went from 80 up to 110 teams the next year as soon as we publicized the fact that we had new fields that were safe. And we've gotten nothing but compliments on that. Unfortunately, now, those fields are going through, are being converted at Mills and Cordova High School to soccer, or excuse me, softball facilities, which are going to be very nice. And, you know, we're working on a rugby complex out here at Mayfair Regional Park, where we'll have anywheres from 12 to 16 rugby and soccer fields. But I wanted to thank you for your support. We've got some, a lot of good things. And the nice thing about the funding that goes through our sports is that it's always some volunteers that are putting in a heck of a lot of effort there, not only when they're involved in coaching and managing these programs, but also putting that labor in on the fields. So thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question of the city manager? It's been a while since I've seen those plans, and probably David and... I don't know if there was a working committee on the softball and soccer fields out at Mills. But I thought they were being programmed so that they could also have rugby on them as well.
Yes, to my knowledge, they can also have rugby on them, yes.
Thank you.
The total number of fields, however, might be reduced.
It's shrinking, okay.
And that could be a problem for his tournament.
To scale it, got it. Okay, okay.
Anyone else you have cards for, interested in discussing this right now? Well, thank you, Darryl and Dennis and Jerry for your input. I know there's a lot of people that have been saying how happy they are that they had the money finally to do some of the work that needed to be done to make things safe. And that's one of the things that we're really glad to see that we can continue to do is to help, especially when it's pointed out that there is something that's really making it not safe for the kids. And one of the first things we did with this fund was to get the helmets for the Cordova High Football. It makes it safer for the football players. And that's kind of hard for people to believe sometimes, but the helmets they have, they can see immediately if there's something that needs to be paid attention to. It's just one thing, but the fields, everything else. It's something that I'm very glad that we're able to continue to help with, and we're going to keep on watching to do everything we can to make things better. All right, page two.
So again, on page two, the first three items are listed, but we can certainly expand to cover through item number seven if you have any comments or questions or if we have any public speaker cards on those items.
I have three public speaker cards for page number two.
Okay.
Do you want to hear those now?
Can we ask a couple of questions before we take public comment? Is that?
Okay.
So number four, five, and six, and seven were all on the previous page. So I'll just reiterate the same thing I just said, which is leave the funding. But I'm not comfortable being the one selecting these. So at this point, put those into limbo for some sort of other body to pick it.
Get art council advice.
Yep. And I'm wondering even if number three would need to do that, too. I mean, it's an event.
It is a temporary.
It's a temporary event. So that's a little different. And somebody else is obviously going to pick the art. So maybe I am okay with just funding it. And it's pretty small. But I mean, the other ones are small, too. So I think, I guess number three I'm okay with supporting today. The other ones. Go find some art experts. Let them do it.
So, okay, so my comment would be, we're very familiar with some of the artists who are working on this. And that a couple of us have had the opportunity to hear the presentation about the art park. And the whole thing is very exciting. And when you have seen the quality of the work of some of these people, I appreciate your comment that it would be nice if we, if the Arts Council could review them all, similar to the way the school districts review the things that have been submitted from the different school sites. And that would be a good thing in terms of process. But we do have experience with the people and the events they're talking about.
I agree.
So.
Yeah. No, I mean, again, I'm not saying I don't like any of these. I just think we're at a point where there needs to be some sort of mechanism that's outside of just staff picking it.
Your comment's really about process.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's not about funding level or qual. If these are the ones that come back, I'll vote for it. I don't mind. I just think another set of eyes besides, you know, our two very capable staff members over here that work on this, giving us recommendations that these are the ones that maybe they like or that fit with the funding, I don't know.
There were six of us, so.
And Stacy, did you?
We know who runs the trust.
Stacy, in your, in your staff report, doesn't it say that the Oversight Committee also reviewed these?
The Oversight Board does not review applications. They look at things once they have been completed.
Okay, I probably misinterpreted oversight.
We were very specific on their charge was looking at.
No, I agree, but I thought there was something in the staff report about that.
So it sounds like you would like Art Council involved in an overall recommendation similar to what we do for education stakeholders. And beyond that, we'll invite up the next three speakers. First speaker on page number two is Ed Fletcher. Following Ed will be Bob Koshat. And following Bob Koshat will be Patience.
Greetings. Thank you. First of all, my name's Ed Fletcher. I'm the president of Sacramento Valley Spark, a nonprofit loosely related to Burning Man. And our proposal is the Sacramento Playa Art Park. This would be the first establishment of such a thing. And it would move from other cities within the region. And I think you'd have a great honor of being the first to do this. We believe it will both be a feature that Rancho Cordovians will enjoy, but it will also attract people from outside that will stop and see the art that's here that have been previously displayed at Burning Man. And we'll also bring in local artists to do that. I commend your leadership in this and thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I ask a really dumb question? I thought they burned everything at Burning Man. Are they going to build it first and bring it here and then go set it on fire?
Burning things is a significant component of Burning Man, but not all of the art is burned there.
Okay.
Last year, there were 78 pieces that were partially funded by Burning Man. Probably 12 of them burned. And there were another 300 art pieces that were brought to Burning Man. Many of those don't burn either.
Interesting. I should have thought to ask that last time, but it just kind of dawned on me that, yeah, isn't it setting stuff on fire?
And last week, when we had people in Reno, some of the, some of the people went to see the similar exhibit up at Reno along the river and sent back photographs.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
They also have a large installation there, the Space Whale. That was an even more significant contribution.
I got pictures of the Space Whale.
Great. Look forward to working with you.
I'm going to Reno. Okay. Thank you.
Actually, Ed, my husband and I photographed it in the daytime. But then the pictures that we got back were from the evening, and that was really spectacular. It's definitely a magnet.
We'll help to do something similar, maybe not that scale, but.
Cool.
Bob?
Good evening. I'm Bob Koshat from Cordova Meadows. And I want to talk about the same subject he did, except from the other side. I think this is an application for people who do not live in Rancho. And to me, that means we can expect to get a request for funds for Trump's Great Wall of China and Jerry Brown's Moonbeam Express. And so it's a little perturbing. I agree with the general things that Darryl said. We could spend this money better in repairing the roads and that sort of thing. Now, and we need some work on roads. And I'm not running down Cyrus or Albert. But I just think that, I looked at the pictures of his art. And quite frankly, I wasn't impressed. My wife tells me that art is in the eyes of the beholder. Well, I guess I ain't a beholder. But anyway, I'm against that project. Let's put the money in the roads. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Following Bob is Patience. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a little nervous, so sorry. My name is Patience Mabry. I live in Cordovatown. And I've met a lot of you at different art events around the city. I'm number six on the agenda, so I was hoping to talk about it. There were basically two issues they found where they didn't recommend it. No location and no clear artistic vision. I have both those issues resolved, and I also have paperwork to that effect. So I was hoping I might be able to submit that information. Where I'd like to put it is over, right on the other side of Cordova Town, is Mayfair Field and, sorry, Mayfair Field and Folsom Boulevard. And there's been a lot of work around there. The Mac's been there. There's the Mayfair Heritage Trail. So there's been a lot of upgrades of Folsom Lake College. And there's Rosie's Country Kitchen, which is a restaurant that's been there for a long time. They have this giant beige wall that you see from Folsom Boulevard. It's just super plain. And every time I see it, I think, oh, do something with it. And so I talked to the owners there, and they're just super excited at the prospect of having something there. They like the idea. A lot of people, there's a lot of traffic right there, so a lot of people would get to see that. It's going to be a community art mural, so it's not just a regular mosaic. So far in the city, we've had a couple of different stained glass ones. We've had some high fire ceramics. This is going to be ceramic tile. It's going to be outdoor ceramic. It's going to be, I personally do fused glass, so it's going to be handmade fused glass elements and also some stained glass. I also priced it really low. This is going to be the largest mural, if you guys approve it, in the city because I really want this to be seen. It's going to be a huge draw for people, is the idea. It's $70 per square foot. Number four on the agenda, which has already been approved, the stained glass mosaic, is priced at $250 a square foot. So it's, you know, quite a bit less. I'm not really making much labor. I just really want to do this.
Well, Rosie's could certainly use a little excitement.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's no question that the three murals that we have already have completely added to the image that you get when you drive along Folsom Boulevard or when you walk or whatever. And of course, in this location, we've got people walking to the college. We've got people walking to light rail. So I would hope that Stacy would accept your revised paperwork.
I hope so.
Can we do that?
And hopefully you heard that none of these have been approved. You would just describe that for one of them.
Well, number four is approved. If I'm reading it right, wasn't it already previously approved? No?
No, it's recommended.
That thing on this page has been pre-approved.
Oh, recommended. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's probably going to be another process, so.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
But you just made a very powerful argument for why we should have some, you know, good expertise in Arts Council looking at these. Because I know, I know you're an active artist in Rancho Cordova, and we really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And we'd love to find a way to showcase it. And we want to be smart, you know, as smart as we can be about how we do that. So where, you know, materials, how does it weather, what does it cost? How many people are involved? You know, is it, is it something that brings us together rather than divides us? There's a million questions you could ask here. I don't want the council asking. I want experts to ask it.
Right. Yeah, no, I definitely understand. And as a local artist, we've seen a lot of, you know, art come up. And it's just amazing that every time something gets added, every time I drive by it, I love seeing it. And I just, I haven't applied before, but I'd really like to be a part of that.
We are very pro-art, so please, please stay here in Rancho Cordova. Keep working on, keep working on this.
Thank you. I've been an artist since 2009 with a business license in Rancho Cordova. It's how I support myself, so.
Great.
Great.
May I give you the paperwork?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you so much.
You know, I think probably what we have to do in this forum is have a call for projects, right? Because we've had a call for projects in the sense that here's Measure H, who wants to apply. Our Arts Council, whatever that, however that is made up, ought to have a call for projects saying, we have $50,000 this year for public art. What do you propose?
Well, and in past years, I mean, whether it's public art or it was theater, one year we just said, just set aside money and go find something to do. I think we're finally getting the number of projects. They're actually here. But I think now it's coming up with, I think, a better process for.
Yeah, just very similar to the schools.
Yeah. And again, we keep refining and doing this a little better.
It's like Shelley's comment about the fact that things take three years to catch on, you know, before they really catch fire and grow. Cyrus, remind me, wasn't there some conversation within the last couple of weeks about the fact that we have an art strategy that was drafted at some point? And we've, we're going to come back to it? And that would take care of something like a call for projects?
Yes. We came to the council some time ago with the concept of creating an art strategic plan and received some guidance and direction from the council. We have a team that's working on the concept. And we will, we have a consultant on board to help us finalize the document. And the plan is to bring it back to the city council in the fall timeframe for review and approval. Just going back on this previous application, I just want for staff's sake, have a clarification. As I understand it, I think we were very clear that the type of art or the location of the art is something the Art Council will review. But am I, are we understanding you correctly that the concept that's being proposed from a funding perspective is supported by the council? For the last application or for the last speaker?
I, I don't want to give any input as to which ones are selected. I think that's something that another body should bring us back a recommendation that we can maybe ultimately vote on or let them pick. Honestly, I don't think I would mind one way or the other.
But would you like to give us a dollar amount to work with?
$50,000. Yeah, I think that's, that's consistent with what we've done before. And I'm guessing that's about what you recommended.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that number.
Okay, sales and overall for public art.
All right, so I have, I have just one question about what we're talking about, though. I appreciate the fact that you all want to involve Arts Council in this, and that's a great thing. But staff has spent a lot of time working on their recommendations. And so, you know, while it's one thing to add a recommendation because there's additional information or gaps filled that were not filled before. But suppose we had a situation where the Arts Council came back and said, oh, we disagree with staff completely, and we don't want to, we don't think any of these projects should be funded. That's kind of insulting to staff, don't you think?
I don't think it would be insulting to staff. I think it would be, okay, that's what the Art Council thinks. And they'll probably do, like David said, and go out for a bunch of projects that would equal the $50,000. I mean, artists and I, they'd be holding.
But that means starting all over again, if, if.
No, they have the applications that they're going to evaluate. They're right here on this page.
Right.
So let them, let them evaluate it, yeah.
Okay.
We can, we can work with that, I believe. Once, once an Arts Council is formed, and as long as we know what the dollar limits are, we, I'm sure the staff, staff could work with the Arts Council.
And I think the important thing, even for the artist that just spoke, to understand is a lot of these, I mean, this is the fourth year that we're doing this. Even if you're not funded this year, that doesn't mean we're never going to do it. It just means you may be the first or second of the next, the next funding round that we have. So stay engaged with us. I just think that, I, I think we can, we can add a better process to this than just the six staff members internally reviewing. And again, I'm not taking into question their decisions. I'm just saying this is an opportunity to engage our arts community to make these selections.
Thank you. Before we move on from page two, I just want to call one thing to your attention. If we are recommending funding for a shorter duration than what they've requested, so for instance, item number three, which is the Playa Park, they had actually requested two years of funding for a combined $41,000. And our recommendation is to fund the first year, evaluate the success of it at that point, and then they could apply for future funding. So I just bring that to your attention so that everyone's clear if the recommendation is made for one year versus two years.
There are very few things that we've done for more than.
And that was common for several.
Yes.
Items on this, on the, on the whole list, and the list is all.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, many of the ones that started getting multiple year funding are because they're in their third year now.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's, thanks. That's a good clarification on that. Thank you. Anything else on the page two? If not, move on to page three, please.
Question about number nine.
Yes.
So this, I love this, this idea. I'm curious as to why it's happening in that specific neighborhood.
Because they're already working in other Elk Grove Unified schools.
So it's familiarity with Elk Grove?
It was expansion within that district. Yeah. They haven't been invited to work in the other school sites or the other districts, as far as I know. They have some, they have some Sac City sites, but not within our city.
So music education, obviously, it's kind of a, I don't know. It's a bit of an education crisis all over the place, right?
They're essentially running the entire music program for both of those schools.
Right.
They, they took it over, the choir program, the percussion program, all of it. The recorders class is all run by staff or alumni from, not staff, alumni from the Mandarin.
So this is 8,400 for 20 kids.
Correct. It would essentially scholarship those students so that they could participate and funding wouldn't be a deterrent. Their family's funding wouldn't be a deterrent from participation.
Yeah, I mean, and for those of you who don't know, they are in the process of buying a building or they may have already bought a new building within, within Rancho Cordova. So they've moved their headquarters in their bingo hall into the city.
Right. Do we have any idea whether this conflicts with what would happen, for example, to high school level? So at a high school level, would you be choosing, assume this went into Folsom Cordova, would you be choosing between being a Mandarin and being Folsom Cordova marching band?
No, no, you do both.
You do both?
Yeah. Mandarin's is an all-star summer program.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the band version of comp vol versus.
A year-round continuation.
Yeah, but it's, it's an all-star band from the region. So some of our students might get in.
Right.
But they, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't do this and then not do your high school marching band, as far as I understand.
We have, we've worked on music here before, you know, various strategies. And this one, this one looks very exciting. I mean, 420 per kid per year is a little pricey, but they're also, those kids are getting a lot for this.
Well, and this is for the kids, if I understand, this is for the kids that couldn't afford to do it. There's a whole bunch of other kids that pay anyways, correct? Yeah.
There's more than that that would participate. We would just be funding 20 of them.
This is, this is scaling up the rest of it.
Basically scholarships.
Yes.
The other, the thought I had was if you expanded that into the other parts of Rancho Cordova that are less wealthy, the per capita need would be substantially higher.
Well, the conversation might be with our, like, our two-by-two is talking to Sarah about engaging them.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, they've, they've come to Fourth of July now, what, two, three times?
We should, we should queue that up for discussion at the two-by-two.
Yeah. And again, they, you know, they moved into town on purpose.
Yep.
You know, they were in the county. They're heavily involved with, I want to say they're, they're north of 20 schools in Elk Grove Unified. So they're at about a third of the campus.
And I see that nine and 10 are ranked second and third by Elk Grove, according to the notes on the right. So that means something to me.
Yes, music education and arts integration were both important for Elk Grove Unified School District.
And for the money, I would say that the choir program, because it doesn't take a lot of instruments besides some holders for sheet music, the bang for your buck that you get in running a choir program over having something that you need a bunch of instruments for.
Yeah, I think that gives a lot of kids the opportunity to do something to see what kind of talent they have, what they can do, whether it's singing, whether it's using an instrument, whatever, I think this is something that would be beneficial, so I like it's, I'm glad it's there.
The other thing for, for those of you who don't live in this neighborhood, well, Bob, you probably know this too, Sunrise and McGarvey have committed to continuing to have their band and a lot of their other programs combined, even though they've split the schools in the last two years. A lot of these programs, it's one band, it's one club, so that's why these funding go across both of them is because these programs are for both schools.
So item number 13 is the Art Arc and there's a proposed cut here from $56,000 over two years to $20,000.
$20,000 per year.
Here.
So $40,000 in total.
So it's 40 over two years instead of 56 over two years, so what do we lose for the 16? It's about a third of the.
Correct.
The budget.
So I looked at the historical cost per school site and most of the school sites average approximately $2,500 and there are 13 school sites, so even if you take into account the administrative costs to schedule everything out and also have some flexibility in the dollar amount, $20,000 per year should cover it. The most expensive school sites would equal the $56,750, but we know from past experience that most school sites don't cost 35 or 3,700. It's based upon school enrollment for those specific classes and so we feel overall 40,000 would cover it, split into two $20,000 increments.
And as for the 13 schools?
Correct.
So we get to every school in two years?
That's also correct. It normally takes two years to schedule out all the school sites. I think Shelley's here in attendance and she could speak to it further if you had other questions.
Sure, Shelley or, I don't know if the Crocker's here, you're probably representing that.
Yeah, getting on the schedule for this thing is the hardest thing, because it doesn't just stay in Rancho.
Hello, Stacy is correct that the $56,000 is based on the Crocker quote and they do quote at our largest schools, so chances are we won't use all those funds. It's also quoted for each school to offer a community art night, which is another cost and sometimes they don't do it, they take another option which is less expensive called an open house and so the, the actual cost at that school does go down. We're trying to encourage them all to do the community art nights because they are more robust. A third thing about this is as we have evolved our very close and important relationship with the Crocker, other opportunities from time to time arise and we'd like to be able to make sure that we have a few dollars in the bank to take advantage of them. For example, we have brought the Crocker Art Arc to the 4th of July where we have set records, not for us, for the Crocker, for the amount of people who have been through the Crocker Art Arc in a single four-hour period, twice we've done that. And now we're talking to the Crocker about what would, what could we do in the summertime with the Art Arc at the MAC. You know, we'd like to be able to take advantage of potential opportunities. That is the reason for asking for a little bit more money. If we don't spend it, we don't ask for it anyway, so it just goes back to you. But those, that is the explanation of why she's right and I'm right at the same time.
So Shelley, I appreciate that. So I guess my recommendation would be for those things, because to me, and honestly, I forgot that we were funding you directly for this, but to me, this is for schools. If we wanted to do things like that, I think that's something to negotiate with your contract with us, each, your annual one. If that, those are things that we need to weave into your.
Well, that contract is negotiated like every three years.
Okay.
So we're sort of trying to, you know, hedge our bets a little bit, but I, I appreciate what you're saying there, we could, we could definitely do this. The Art Arc program is, is administered and arranged through the Cordova Community Council Foundation and it's all three school districts and.
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
And a couple other stops along the way, so it's a little different than an actual school ask, I think, in that regard.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, that, like, I, I know this is an arts and history cult, but to me, this is an education funding item, but I would encourage you to ask for the, I, I would love to see those things be funded if we can do it, I just think there's somewhere else that we could probably take that from.
Okay, well, are you saying that in this case, for, for this round of Measure H, community enhancement funding, we should continue as is or did you want us to make a change?
No, I want you to have the $16,750 because I don't think we should pull that yet and then you can make that change. That's what I would like.
Okay.
Because I don't want to take the chance, because the Art Arc at the 4th of July was actually a boon and a lot of people liked it and to have it tie in with the MAC is a great idea. I don't want to take that option and wait for the three-year contract negotiations to pull out.
Well, I, I don't think we need to wait for three years. My, my concern is that, I just heard that the $56,000 is an overestimate for school sites.
It is.
But then that gives us room to do things that, that aren't described in the proposal.
Right.
It's part of the, the scope of this, so I, if we wanted to, if we wanted to look at a proposal for the things that Shelley's talking about, we should, it's just not in this.
Two years ago, I attended the.
Unless I'm, unless I'm hearing wrong.
Community art event at Navigator and you're right, it was absolutely terrific. All sorts of parents and kids came and they did specific directed activities that Crocker staff brought with them and then the Art Arc was open in, at that evening, in addition to it being open to the classes during the daytime.
Right.
So it was an opportunity for a much larger group and in essence, you know, kind of like getting more bang for the buck in terms of who we share the Art Arc with.
Right. We just think that if, as, as the schools get used to hosting the Art Arc, they will, more and more of them are using the community art night, it could be a neighborhood event. I mean, it, it has a lot of potential.
Yeah, I want to, there's other opportunities where we leave money just aside in case there's an opportunity that comes come up, I would like to leave it there just in case an opportunity does come up. I don't see why we should pull it out.
I would support that as well and I think Donald probably made the, the other observation that this really is education, because if you're taking this, $50,000 of this, if you're taking this to schools for the purpose of enhancing art education in schools, that really is an education category.
There's a handful of things on here that are both Cordova, that are, that are art too. It's just, I, the proposal in front of me that I, that I'm looking at right now, and I don't have the whole thing in front of me, doesn't describe the, the other things that you're talking about. And again, I'm not saying I wouldn't want to fund that, I just don't think I should fund it with something that says "Art for Kids, Art Arc," that, that describes public elementary schools in Rancho Cordova and then say, "We're also going to have leftovers for 4th of July and a summer program and other things that aren't part of these school visits."
Yeah, and.
And again, and understanding, like, I've been to the one that's been at Sunrise, I've been to the one at Navigator, handful, they're fantastic and I want to fund all of it, I just, I guess I just want to be as transparent as I can about what we're voting on and what, what I'm giving the thumbs up to would be to fund what Stacy just described, which costs about $2,500 a piece, which would be about 40 grand.
Correct.
If there's an extra $15,000, we should either allocate it here or amend your contract and take it out of the general fund or something.
You know, when I multiply 2,500 times 13, I get 32,500, which is more, times two is more than was asked for.
I can't do mental math, Linda, you know that. We need her.
Those 13 schools, Linda, are actually visited over the course of two years, so you're really only going to visit about six schools in one year and seven the next year.
Okay, all right.
That's true. Well, I.
I said my piece, if there are three people that want to do $56,000, let's just move on.
And we, and we probably will not get to $56,000, that would be an incredible outcome, but I just wanted to ask for what the Crocker was saying would, it would be at its absolute, you know, I'm being conservative.
As long as we have the Crocker coming still.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll support the full $56,000 too.
Me too.
I don't have anything to go back again at it at the moment unless someone asks to come back again after we're done with the rest of them and if not.
I've, I've heard from two.
Two that said $56,000, I'm, I'm fine with the 40, but if there's, if you disagree, then fine.
I'm good with $56,000.
Yep, there you go, we're done.
Okay.
So we're 16 grand over budget.
You're going in the wrong direction.
Or we could move 50 to education, maybe that helps.
No, because you got to take it from arts, if you just funded it.
Well, so far we're doing better than I thought we would before this city council began. We're on page four now and we aren't going back to one, two, or three again, so that's all right.
So on page four, it covers items 14 through essentially 22. There's a couple of items that we have pulled out for a later discussion, so items 17 through 20, we plan on having towards the end, once we get to item or page 16.
Only question I have on page four is item 21?
Yes, the electronic message board.
Yeah, I'm not sure I get the, the notes. The idea with these electronic message boards is they can be used day of event, week of event, to promote something happening.
Correct.
And the note sort of suggests that, well, you can just move it around and have the same effect, but I'm not, not certain that's practical.
Sure, part of our concern was a mobile speed or a mobile sign that's sitting in the same location year-round probably presents an issue with our own sign ordinance and codes such as that.
Has this been left in one place year-round?
Well, it is.
It's over here on Zinfandel.
Been there for months.
Is this just buying another one of those?
Correct.
Okay. I, I envisioned something much different in my head when I read this.
The other, the other odd thing we've got here is originally we were talking about some sort of sign at, like, Chasing Coloma, some central location and we've never gotten that done. But we sort of, you know, 4th of July, around 4th of July activities, we said, "We need something at that corner, it's every, that's a huge traffic corner." Something electronic is what was made, making sense, we're not really moving towards that. I think this is a reasonable alternative to that. If, I don't agree that that sign should be left in one spot year-round, that doesn't make sense to me, but I was under the assumption that it would move on a regular basis. But the idea that we would advertise, you know, north of 50 as well or in Anatolia or, you know, other places depending on what the event is, I don't know. We found in RCIA, the best way to reach parents is not through email, not by text, not by social media, not by using Peach Jar through the schools. The way we've gotten the most feedback from is a sign, a plastic sign attached to the fence in front of the school, about as old-school as you can imagine, so this sort of says, eh, this is an old-school way.
The one out here on Zinfandel, I guess I, maybe I wrongly did, I assumed that was ours. That's not ours?
It is not ours.
Interesting. Do we own them? Do we own ones like this?
Our Public Works Department has one, right?
One?
Public Works has more than one, I don't know the exact number. We did purchase an electronic message board for the Cordova Community Council a few years ago and the one that you're seeing is that one.
Okay, I mean, to me, to me, this is, this is like the same question as the last couple of years of asking for a van that's going to get used like 12 days out of the year or 20 days out of the year that, you know, and you had talked about doing, you know, an accountant enterprise for it. I mean, something like this, if we have surplus signs like this in our yard, is this something that we could just work with an organization to, to share?
I think that's, yeah, definitely possible. The question or the problem is that the intent of these signs was not to stay on the right of way for months, month after month.
Right.
And that's what we're seeing and that's what the concern is, because that, that concept itself violates our own zoning code and sign.
Yeah, why haven't we enforced that?
Because it says something every day.
The organization that owns it, we paid for it and they're good friends of ours, but no, I, I would think that there's a workable solution, they're considering, you know, when, if they're not in use, that we would have the opportunity to, to park them around. I mean, we, you know, the airshow utilizes, I'm assuming ours, for traffic direction, a lot of other things anyway, so it's not like we don't, we haven't already used our stock to, to work with other groups.
If they're the same quality and they're largely available.
It's the same thing, isn't it?
Okay, so this one out here is, is less, much less than handsome, okay? They're not attractive. However, this one advertises what's going on at the MAC or someplace else constantly. It's up, it, it's on every day, it says something and it is changed promptly when events are over and it advertises the next event. The other thing we're finding out is that, and Albert and I've had this conversation, is that Zinfandel is a terrific place to advertise things because if you contrast it with Sunrise Boulevard, a significant percentage of the people on Sunrise Boulevard are not stopping in Rancho Cordova, period. They are coming from the rural South County or some other county and they're going to other places like the freeway or north of the river, which doesn't do anybody any good. But Zinfandel has a huge number of people who live within Rancho Cordova because the people in the Anatolias and North Douglas and whatnot have learned that even though the traffic on Zinfandel increases on a weekly basis, it still is an easier way to get to somewhere in Rancho Cordova than, than to try to mosey up Sunrise Boulevard, which is about all you do at 4:30 in the afternoon, so.
Linda, it sounds like we need an electronic billboard there.
No, we don't, well, well, we might, no, 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 hang on. Albert and I've had this conversation, because given that there is a proposal to try to
find a permanent location for something like that, there is a lot to be said for that, but, but then the question is, given the property owner on, you know, on the side of the road, how much of that is, is property that could legitimately be city right-of-way where a sign could be, could, could be housed and how much of that is, belongs to the private property owner at that location?
Sounds like this needs more work.
Believe me, wayfinding signage is something that is very important to me and I thought a lot about this.
Yeah, I just, I think there's a way to, I think there's a way to accomplish this without, without buying another one. That's, that's what I'm feeling.
Well, I, I think there's a really good point made here, if we've got one sitting in the warehouse that we only use when we have emergencies or, or need to direct people to the airshow, then we really ought to drag it out and put it someplace.
Well, PD has one and we have to talk with them to see if it can be shared and how often.
The Public Works doesn't have one?
They have, they have changeable, you have speed feedback signs, but not the changeable message signs.
Slightly different.
Okay. So do we want to get one?
So we only have one of those ones we have on Zinfandel that we're talking about right now, that's changeable like that and so it goes along with the MAC, it goes along with the movies and the theater when it goes along. That can change, but the other one doesn't?
It sounds like PD might have one.
PD does have one.
PD does have one and Cordova Community Council has one, right.
Okay. So maybe this is a discussion through the budget, not Measure H, of us getting to more of them if we, if we feel that there's a demand for, for that kind of stuff.
Maybe there's a way to make them more attractive.
Maybe, maybe.
Paint it.
I'll trust Albert to, to research that.
Hire an artist and paint it.
I don't want to pick art.
So in other words, we're not going to have anybody asking for the $18,000, we're going to leave it at zero at the moment and.
Yeah, I think there's some other ways to get it.
See, we just picked up $2,000.
We could do some kind of a report back on that to us.
No, they had already zeroed it out. We didn't save any of it.
Okay, anything else on page four?
Do I have any speaker cards? I do, Jerry Jewell, if you would like to come forward. Jerry is item 22, which is the Rancho Cordova Holiday Light Parade on page four.
Good evening, Jerry Jewell, Rancho Cordova Holiday Light Parade. Earlier this year, the parade committee. Earlier this year, the parade committee, there's actually a group of us that put this on. We met to discuss the results of the two thousand and eighteen parade. And although we had much better floats, many more people participating in the parade, our attendance at the parade was actually lower than the first year we did the event. And we were very concerned with it. And the number one issue on our list to change, to get a better attendance, was we need to make the event longer. I mean, we literally were, were struggling to make the event last forty minutes. And I remember you, you commented about this last year during the funding process, that that's a lot of money for a forty-five-minute event. And we took it to heart, and you were right. And we're looking now to expand the event by putting in a couple of portable stages and hiring or coercing lots of different kinds of performers, a lot of variety of performers, to entertain the crowd for a couple of hours before the parade, as well as bringing in food vendors and other types of vendors that seem appropriate to the parade. And basically extend it from four o'clock until the parade is over. We'd also have the art cars in position both before and after the parade, so that people could come up and get a closer look at them and talk with the owners and, and, and a little more involved with the public. During the parade itself, we would have more performers on the street doing close-up entertainment to the crowd, more personalized, such as close-up magicians and clowns. That would be much more interactive with the crowd and getting people a little more enthused about it. Number two on our list, and, and the reason we had a lower turnout last year as far as the public attendance was we lost our marketing firm a couple of weeks before the event, and it really hurt us. We simply couldn't pay them. Our funding application last year was cut pretty substantially, and the money that we had promised the marketing firm simply did not exist. And that was a very ugly parting for us, unfortunately. We lost our website, we lost our advertising, we lost our PR, we lost our media contacts. We lost pretty much everything that would have been used to draw people to the parade. So this year, we're hoping to have an entirely new website established, as well as get a actual marketing PR firm to help us out professionally. We had the other issue was people were complaining that they couldn't hear sound systems along the parade route. Apparently, there weren't enough on the floats themselves to get our messages across. So we were hoping that this year we could put out portable PA systems along the parade route, so that the announcements and the music that come from the main announcement float could be distributed across the whole route. All told, that means that we would really need that thirty K that we applied for, instead of the twenty K that we've had the staff approve. We were also under the impression that this being our third year of the event, that we could apply for multiple years. And I see that city staff has, has turned that down as well.
Please wrap up your comments.
Pardon me?
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, so we're hoping we can get the three-year approval and we can get the full thirty K. Thank you.
So Jerry, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure how, oh, well, first of all, four o'clock, of course, eats into the commute time.
It's Saturday, Saturday night.
Okay, good. So, and I didn't remember. So, um, given that the, I still say that International is the logical place to do that, but we were, we were in a different location this year. We were at the intersection of Bridgeway and International, instead of down at Prospect Park and International. And the thing is, how do you do? Because people are not gonna stroll, this is not a strolling activity, especially when you've got little kids and dogs and whatnot. So people come and they, just like any parade, you know, just like the Fourth of July parade, people come and they station themselves. So how does that work if you have food vendors or? Where, number one, would you even put the food vendors, considering that it's all people's very limited front yards? And how do you, how do you access the food vendors? And then you've said mobile stages, but how does that work?
Well, there are many other changes that we're going to incorporate this year that really have nothing to do with the funding. But one of the changes we hope to make is moving the entire venue up here by City Hall and either running it on White Rock or Prospect Park and allowing the vendors to use the facilities and parking around City Hall. Obviously, we haven't cleared any of this with anybody at City. We're just not that far along yet, but that's kind of our plan for this year, is to move the venue here. And I think it's a much better location, frankly. I think you have a lot of facilities here that we could really take advantage of that are not on International.
Right now, I'm thinking the one year and see how it works, rather than having three.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He spoke in favor of one year versus three.
Oh.
And to see how it works, changing it like you're talking about would be a completely different thing, and you have to see whether it works or not that way.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. And again, I, I love the parade, we've gone both years. But there were some changes from the first year, and, and again, we kind of covet multi-year commitments to a very small few groups of grantees. And so I, I don't think at this point I'm ready to do that for this one either. Because I, I want to say I can count on my one hand how many we've actually done that for out of like ninety. So there, there, and there are a lot of folks that are asking for multi-year, we just, we just don't do that.
What do we think about twenty versus thirty?
We can do it, we're gonna have to find another place to cut, though. I ought to give him a chance to actually get, do the changes he wants to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, I mean, we don't know where it's gonna be. Part of the cost is coming from public safety and traffic control and other things like that. So again, if, if the parameters are what they are, this is what we need to fit into to, to deliver whatever it is. So I'm, I'm fine with going with staff's recommendation.
Yeah. And unfortunately, there's a significant difference in putting something on White Rock, which is an access for industrial traffic, kind of twenty-four, seven, as opposed to putting it on International, which over the, on the weekends, is really much more local traffic. So there could be a, a larger strain on public safety and traffic control.
Yeah. The, the other thing to, to think about with International, with when they did this, this past year, was it was the same day as the Powell fun run. So a lot of that stuff was already set down, so that street was already closed, or parts of it were. And so they just left the cones until that night. And so basically, everyone knew, just stay the heck away from International if you're trying to get around. So from that standpoint, you know, and again, you know, he, he said, we haven't had the conversations with the city yet. I, I think stick with the staff's recommendation, which is to fully fund what the request is, but it's also taking into account the cost that we're gonna have as far as public safety.
If I may.
Well, no, no, hang, no, hang on, your, your time's expired, so. So in, in looking at this, and still with a moving target of what this event is gonna look like, I, I would rather stay with the staff's recommendation for the amounts. Because again, at, at some point, if we just keep adding to this, we're gonna be over budget, and we're gonna have to go find it from something else we've already said that we have a budget for.
Anything else from Linda Garrett, David?
Jerry, what's your fundraising like for this event? Are you able to raise cash?
Last year, we had a person who came in fairly early in the year, who said that they were going to handle all the fundraising. A person who had extremely broad experience for nonprofit fundraising. And we made the mistake of handing that entire project over to that person. And that person did zero in fundraising. So I was able to get a couple of small vendors for a couple of five hundred dollars apiece toward the last. But it really does take a personal contact to do that, and last year, we didn't have that. So between that and the PR person, marketing person being gone, we really suffered quite a lot last year on the team.
Jerry, I, I'm sorry, I had it in my stack of things to bring for a variety of reasons. But some of our, some of my colleagues, when they were in DC in March, I think it was, came back with a brochure from the National Endowment for the Arts. And they have a variety of grants in there that are performance-based. And there's such a broad variety of grants that it just strikes me that, that what you're doing is prime for that. So I, if I were you, I would research the National Endowment for the Arts. And they make very practical grants, it's not like asking for a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. We can look into that. For now, we need, in order to expand the event, our, my committee, which I cannot do the parade without, is, is quite adamant that we have to do the expanded hours and the expanded events, and without the full thirty thousand, we, we can't pull it off.
Then you're gonna need to look at fundraising, as, as David asked.
I, I understand that. We would need a fundraising in addition also, yes. Okay, thank you.
So that event has great potential. There's a couple of things on our, on this tonight that are event-related. I would hate to see us lose that. I mean, year one, you definitely saw the, like, regional impact that had.
I think you, I think you should just look at, we get the whole thing, pull it out.
Yeah.
I think we should pull it out and talk about it in a little bit. I want to see what else I can cut from, if I wanted to put ten thousand toward this event, what else is on the list.
I'm still thinking about the thirty thousand for the one year, rather than going three years with ninety thousand.
I'm okay with the one year, definitely one year, just to see what he's gonna do, but we probably need to go to the thirty, and then see where else we can cut from.
Again, the staff is recommending thirty, that we're just accounting for the fact that we spend ten grand on this event when it comes to public safety.
I don't think what they, we require them to pay ten to us, though, for public safety.
No, no, that, but that's the cost to us.
Okay, forty.
The staff is, is reflecting the investment that the city is making.
They would like thirty grand in cash.
We actually do hire a third-party vendor to provide the cones and traffic control, so that is actually a hard check that we write.
So the first year, did we give them thirty and?
No. Last year, we gave them, I believe, nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty, and then on top of that, we paid for public safety and traffic.
Right.
And the first year, we didn't pay for anything.
Other than shutting down the roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we really, I don't think, I don't think we want to get in the trap of saying, you're gonna do an event, and then you've got to pay us, or we're gonna give you money so you can pay us to do something.
And then, and then we want to make it bigger, so pay us more.
Pay us more, yeah, that, that's a trap most jurisdictions fall into. And it's usually, I think, it's logically solved when you ask, you know, police chief, fire chief, whoever it is, did you not think there was gonna be a Fourth of July this year, and you didn't plan that in the budget? You know, it seems silly at some level to do that.
So this is reflecting what our investment was last year, a, a little bit more than it was. You know, and essentially, what I just heard was all of the growth is our responsibility. I don't think it is.
Well, I'll support Garrett's idea that we should hold that one and talk about it.
Yeah, I want to see where else I can cut, possibly add to this event.
I'm ready.
We'll write twenty-two then on our list.
Excellent.
I'm ready.
Do we have any other speaker cards from page four, Stacy? We do not.
Anything else on that? I wouldn't say, let's go on to page five.
Yes.
So page five covers items twenty-three through thirty-three, and there are a few items that we've pulled out and we'll discuss on page seventeen.
Adam? Do I need to excuse myself on this one?
Number twenty-three does touch a little bit on the potential for CRPD property, so we could add that. There's two other items that will have a direct involvement. We'll go ahead and just move it to the end.
If we're not gonna talk about it, I don't think you have to excuse yourself.
Okay.
Right?
Number twenty-three to the end.
Twenty-nine.
And just for the benefit of the public, Mr. Gatewood's company does some work with the Cordova Park and Rec District, so he will be recusing on all applications that have to do with that item. So we're gonna segment those, and when any final.
So, so we're moving this one, number twenty-three, to a later discussion?
We'll just move it to page fifteen, yes.
I think if we pass by it and don't mention it.
Okay. I just, the other ones were noted that we're moving them, okay, okay.
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
We've, we've had proposals like this before. I see it's pretty lowly ranked by Folsom Cordova. It's labeled as sports, which is odd to me. And it's about five hundred and forty-one dollars a kid.
Here'd be one that I'd be willing to save.
For an hour a week, I'm not sold on this one.
You know what's interesting? Two years ago, I think it was two years ago, I met Cody Stark from Good Day Sacramento over there, and we spent.
I was supposed to be there.
Yes, right, and, and I, and I went, and we spent the entire, the entire hour flopping around on yoga mats with the girls. And, and I have to say, for something I was, I was pretty skeptical of, this, what they're doing really is of value to the girls individually, in a variety of ways, both their, their physical, as well as their emotional, emotional health. It just is really too bad that the cost is so high, and that it can't be expanded to more of the girls.
So was it at Mitchell, or was, you went to Kenny, didn't you?
It was at Mitchell Middle School in the past.
It was at Mitchell, yeah.
I thought it was at Kenny, okay.
Yeah, it was at Mitchell.
It may be great, it's just expensive. I don't think it's sports, it should be in an education category or, or something else.
I disagree.
Well, it's health.
Yeah, I mean, if it's yoga, or it's Tai Chi, or anything, I mean, that, you know, they're all physical activities for students.
It's creative arts, is how they label it.
It's art, culture, and, and sports, there you go.
Yeah, but see how sports is underlined? Let's just underline one of the others.
They're all underlying sports, aren't they?
No, no.
If you look at the thing, it says art slash culture slash history, entertainment.
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought that was, that's, that was the point I was making, that it was like.
Just because there is a competition yoga, doesn't mean that it's not a sport.
Can I pull twenty-nine out and have that as money that I possibly can put towards something else?
I would be opposed to that, to moving that to the, to that event.
To what event?
To the parade.
I didn't say it was gonna be a parade, I said I was looking for ways to cut, we already grows it, right?
I'd rather fund this.
Okay, that's one.
I'd probably back you, Garrett, on that. I'm not, this one just seems too expensive to me.
What's that, David?
This one just seems too expensive to me.
Yeah, Linda was saying she felt it was, it's a shame that it costs so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are very few sports in here that are specific to women.
No. Softball, baseball.
Very few.
Wrestling, basketball.
We didn't, we're not funding wrestling.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Just saying.
It's not recommended.
So using the yoga.
So I'm in support of the staff's recommendation on this one.
Stacy, does it work to go to one class a week?
I'm sure they can scale it back, the reason that they were doing, we were recommending at least two classes.
Because they asked for three.
Well, because they typically have one class that's predominantly for males and one class for females, and we weren't trying to exclude one.
Got it, and, and I will say, it would, it would not work to, I mean, the guys might be okay doing yoga with the girls, but the girls at this age would not be okay doing yoga with the boys, believe me.
No comment, just agreeing.
Well, not all. It was a little, let's say Cody, Cody, who's an absolutely delightful person, got a little red at some point.
So are we going to fund it on the 16, 250, or we're not funding it?
One say fund, two say maybe not. Unless we're waiting on other two.
Let's do the 16, 250.
I'm good with the 16, 250.
Donald, I believe you said you were good with the 16, 250. Okay.
I'm ready.
Any other questions or comments about page five or speaker cards?
Any cards?
No speaker cards.
Yes, here's your wrestling club.
So we will be moving item 36 from this page to the end, if there's any discussion needed, but otherwise, this covers items 34 and 35, and then the last two on this page have already been approved.
So 35, I'd like to see, I don't know, 5,000?
Yes.
35 is a great idea, but for some reason, the school district withheld endorsement, which seems painful.
Did they have a reason? Go ahead.
I don't remember them listing a specific reason. I believe Peter Maroon is here. I don't know if he has additional information as the athletic director.
Well, it's a, it's a, who's talking?
Peter, come, come on up, please.
He can't escape it.
Well, I mean, what I will say is, it's a wrestling club, so it's its own nonprofit. It's not the school. Is that what you're going to say? There you go. I said it.
Yeah, this is not a person that works for the school district, so we don't endorse this as being an outside entity running their own club.
Yeah.
And so we can't endorse that. Otherwise, we're holding liability.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, assuming they're a C3 and they can do it, but, yeah, I mean, they've never asked, I think 5's, I mean, that buys, that buys a lot of singlets and maybe even a mat. Yeah. I mean, you can get a mat for a couple grand.
They also put in here ages eight through 14, and I'm assuming they put high, they put Mills, Mitchell, and Cordova High School, 14-year, looking at maybe freshmen at most, but not getting into the sophomores and juniors.
No, no, no. No, so the, the club sports, the way this works, and I'm not sure why they excluded it to just those ages, this is wrestling off-season.
Right.
So this has nothing to do with the collegiate season.
My point, sorry, my point was that the age groups they're refining are restricted to younger levels, middle school, and only freshmen at the high school, because they're saying 14, so I'm assuming they're not going to do juniors, for instance, sophomores, juniors, and seniors in this, because they said eight to 14.
Yeah, I think that's what they're targeting the funding to. I mean, you, you wouldn't have a wrestling club that didn't have high school students. It doesn't make any sense.
Right, that's why I...
Yeah, no, no, I get your point. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's a club, it's not, it's not the school.
Can you put them in our DC?
Okay, so Peter, so then, the last part of that sentence does say plans on operating at Mitchell, so that would mean they'd have to have funding to actually rent space at Mitchell.
Correct.
Well, they probably already do, right?
I don't know, to be honest with you, I've never seen a major wrestling club using our facilities.
Let's, can, let's move this to getting more information.
I'd, I'd like more information about it.
Because I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know this wrestling club either, and I know most of the ones around the city are near here. And I want to say Cordova's got, has its own.
If, if they worked with Folsom Cordova Schools and those school programs in a, in some kind of a friendly way, if they were active in RCA or something like that, if they were open to, to everyone without a huge economic barrier, you know, if this is scholarships again, and I, I don't know what this is exactly, but there's potential here, I would say, to support what happens in schools and to support youth sports in, in Rancho Cordova. There's also potential that this is, you know, some sort of an elite group that is seeking funding from us, but I don't think we would want to go there. We haven't, certainly haven't gone there before.
There really aren't any. There, there aren't any real elite wrestling clubs around here like that.
All right.
So that, that's not a concern. Most, most of them are pretty small, not well-funded. The 75 bucks that they collect barely covers, you know, some of their registration fees and maybe some gas and stuff.
Sawa is the freestyle wrestling that usually happens versus your Roma Greco wrestling that takes place at the high school level. So Sawa's an outside, kind of like AAU, if you will, in regards to wrestling that takes place off-season from high school sports.
Right. You're, you're kind of right. Collegiate is your high school. Greco-Roman and freestyle are what these guys do.
Did you do Sawa?
No, it wasn't called that. That's, that's the name of the Sacramento one. Ours was Sava, I believe it.
So would this be beneficial and work with school programs potentially, or is it competition?
It's, it's competition, but it would definitely help kids who participate in the high school level. I mean, prepare and form and make it a year-round versus a seasonal.
Yeah, that's the benefit.
So, so the way it works is collegiate is usually descent, end of November through March is when state championships, then the freestyle and Greco tournaments start right after that and run through the rest of the spring. Maybe they do some stuff in the summer, but then there's usually takedown tournaments in the fall. Those are all club sports. So this is kind of, it's bridging the gap to keep kids wrestling for more of the year. So it's, it's different, I mean, there's state champion, there's state championships for cadets and juniors, and then there's national championships that you can get to if you qualify for, but you have to be part of a club that is a member of these organizations, and then there's regionals, then state championships.
Okay, so we need more information.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we need to kick the tires on, do they have a C3, all those other things that...
We've written it down further.
Great.
And Donald, we gotta, we gotta figure out where the line is between, you know, like, Little League and a club sport, you know what I mean? So Little League costs 125 bucks to play, club baseball might cost you 1,000 to play. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be in the business of funding the for-profit club.
No, no, no.
We would be in the business of helping Little, right?
And again, that's why I was saying, there's no elite wrestling club, like you're saying. It's 75 bucks to be a member of the club. Then you go pay for your tournament fees and things like that as you go in, like, if I decide this Saturday I'm going to go to a tournament, then I would pay my $30 to be in the tournament. It doesn't go to the club, so the club's keeping 75 bucks a, a person. Like, as you can see, they're not well-funded.
Yeah.
This is, this is cheaper than Little League.
Let's just, yeah, if it's a, if it's a nonprofit, no one's making a ton of money off of this and it's done by volunteers, that would be great.
Yeah, because as far as I know, the, the only other wrestling clubs I'm aware of is Pleasant Grove's got one, Cap Christian's got one.
Folsom.
Folsom has one, and Rosemont has one. I don't even know if Cordova has one. So, and, and maybe as we look into this, we decide we want to talk to the Cordova Wrestling Club, if there is one. But as far as I know, there's not a robust one in, in Rancho right now.
Okay, so within item number 35, we need more information. 36 is going on to page 17. The bottom two have already been approved.
Do we have any speaker cards, Stacy?
No, we do not.
All righty, let's go on to page 17.
Anybody wants to lecture us on stuff we already decided? Okay.
Cool.
So we are on page seven, which includes one item that has already been approved as part of a two-year request, which is the first line item, and then we have items 37 through 40 on this page. Any questions or comments about any of those?
I know this is going to sound silly, but what did we save $32 for?
Because at the end, it makes the math really good. It was strategic.
This was your rounding error, huh?
This is, this is how we save the money, 32, a buck off each one?
But unfortunately, Garrett's going to ruin all that tonight, so.
That's right.
Hey, $32 is $32, right?
So item 39, you know, first, first glance, you would say that's a continuation of our garden efforts in various schools, but because it was lowly ranked by Folsom Cordova Unified School District, we're not recommending.
It's also a mural, that's...
Garden and mural, yeah.
Correct.
So does this school not, I'm not familiar with this school. Is this, is this a Folsom Cordova school?
It is at Kenny.
Oh, it's the other half.
It's the day school at Kenny.
Okay. Yeah, can, can this in some way be supported through, or has it already been supported through, the Soilborne Garden kind of fund that we've been doing?
The $30,000 that we've been providing to Soilborne Farms is, once a garden is built, it's kind of the sustaining effort behind it. It's not the initial funding to fund the garden.
But the first few years, we funded the construction of the gardens. I think we, there's even some in here, right?
There is not a garden at Prospect Community Day School. They're looking to construct one.
We've, we've paid to build them at most every other school, right?
Correct. We're not arguing the fact that we like to see investments made in schools for school gardens. It was just a matter of saying there were other things that both staff and the district recommended hire, and so we just didn't say yes to everything.
Okay.
Want to pull it out and see if I can?
I don't know, I like the idea of giving the chance to, letting them have a chance to start if they don't have a garden now. The others, we started, and then it's up to them to continue, working with the Soilborne or whoever else, but it's not something that continues every year from the Measure H. It's something to start and then let's see if you can continue with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, because I hear you. I mean, we're paying Soilborne to kind of sustain the rest of them. So maybe taking the mural out, but looking at it and saying, what do you need to do a garden? And that's typically been $2,000, I thought, right?
The typical construction for a garden at a school site is at least 10,000, and I've seen them as high as 18.
That's what we, that's what we were paying?
We've typically paid 10, but the full cost, because I see the actual invoices, has been much greater than 10, unless they have volunteer labor. And in most cases at a school site, they're using labor paid at prevailing wage, et cetera.
Considering this is the only ask this year, I'd say let's just decline.
This isn't the only one for Prospect.
No, 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 this is the only garden ask, right? Is this the only one that we're turning down?
Elk Grove Unified School District also has a garden ask. It's basically to do Phase II of a garden project.
That's at Sunrise?
Yes.
I knew that. I don't know, I don't know how anyone else feels.
I'd probably prefer to add it.
Yeah, so I, let's put that in the parking lot. But for a garden, not, not for a mural, I guess. Let the, let the students draw a mural.
What other, what other projects?
Wait, does anybody agree with me on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
What other projects were proposed for the same school?
The vans for the schools are for both Prospect slash Kenny as well as Walnut Wood High School. So there is a grant request for a van.
And have we explored the, I don't, we're not there yet. Have we explored the idea of working with Enterprise to try to provide these things? Because a lot of transportation needs, we, you know, you buy them and they're going to use them 30% of the year, basically.
When the PAL van was requested and approved in this last year, we did research to determine, you know, was it more cost-efficient to purchase a vehicle, to lease a vehicle, in that case to potentially go through the county fleet? And we analyzed all of those. In the case of the van for PAL, we opted to lease the vehicle over a five-year period, and I think the lease cost was roughly $35,000, and that was for like a 10 or 11-passenger van.
That was 30, 30 grand over five years?
Yes. And the cost to purchase it outright...
More effective than paying for it, yeah.
Is roughly 40 to 60, depending on the van you select.
Okay, okay. Well, we're not there yet, so.
Item, item 38.
Yes.
It's a career choices course for adults. Open to 30 adults, you may not get that many, but if you did, it'd be $639 per adult.
So we were looking at, or looking at it more from the perspective that many of the educational offerings are focused on youth, and this is one of about two programs that are focused more on adult education. So our focus was on adult versus the cost per student ratio.
Curriculum costs more for things like this. It's got to be a lot more targeted, but...
It's a class at the Folsom Cordova Adult School. They don't offer classes like this otherwise. I did, that one feels to me like we're really getting into what they're funded to do.
So, I like this one, I'll tell you why. So years ago, and, you know, we can get in the weeds about Sac City Unified's budget, but one of the things that happened 10 years ago to school districts was they had tier one, tier two, and tier three funding, and I won't bore you with all of it, but basically what happened was adult ed became what was called tier three, which meant you could take the money that you were getting funded from like two years ago, whatever that funding level was, that's what you're getting minus 30%, and you can decide if you want to offer that service anymore. And adult ed was one of those ones where it's like, you were getting 7 million from the state. Okay, now you get five, and you can decide if you're going to offer any of that. So Sac City Unified and most school districts got out of the business of adult ed completely. So things like this, that used to be very cost-effective, the cost comparative from this to go into the private sector to get this kind of course would be, you know, what did you say, it was 600 bucks a person?
39, yeah.
Is probably 2,000 or more for, you know, a four-week course in the private sector when they offer it. So there were things like court reporter classes and things like that that were one tenth of what they would cost in the private sector. But most school districts couldn't afford to continue to offer programs like this, and we talk about less than 10% of our residents are qualified to work in our city. Things like this, I think, are really valuable.
I think it's a good point. I like the idea of supporting this one.
And again, that's a complicated answer to this, but the reason most school districts got out of the business of helping adults was they were trying to survive and be able to still offer K-12 programming. So these, these programs used to exist in a lot better form, but that was back when you literally got ADA for this. So you signed up an adult for this, they paid 100 bucks, the state paid the other $700 that it cost to deliver this program. The state's not funding any of this anymore.
Donald, Stacy, did you think at all about how you measure the success of something like this? Or, or where the edge is? I mean, I guess I could, you know, in a few years, I have budget cuts left to eliminate the adult school. Do they ask us to fund the whole adult school? How do we measure what we should do here?
The, I think the difference with Folsom Cordova was they, unlike Sac City, they didn't completely get out of the business. So they still have some of the infrastructure. You could, I, I bet you you couldn't even do this at Sac City Unified anymore. I don't, I don't think there's anyone left there to do it. But I will say that they're supposed to be collecting success rates as far as job placements and employment rates, salary increases, that kind of stuff.
So they do have specific metrics listed in their grant application. Their goal is to have 90% of students develop a detailed plan, to have students access the Job Center for Employment Services, to have the same 90% of students follow their plans once they exit the class. They'll, they will follow up with students with surveys, text messages, Facebook messages, et cetera, to keep engagement. They hope to have 80% of students have regular attendance in the adult school. It goes on and on in terms of the metrics they have listed in their application.
So Stacy, this is one of those things that happens at Walnut Wood, right?
Yes.
Okay. And there's, there's kind of a synergy at Walnut Wood between the, the young adults. And I, I mean, I, I only know just a little bit from the exposure over there, but there's kind of a synergy between the young adults, and some of them may be like single mothers, and, and then the, the Folsom Cordova Committee Partnership Job Training Center that's over there, and, and all the ladies who get involved in the Dia de las Muertos. And without knowing exactly which group of people or whether it applies to all of them, it would be difficult to, to make a determination, but a... them, it would be difficult to, to make a determination, but a lot of the, if it's, if it's the young adults, um, a lot of those people really are learning life skills that they didn't get when they were in high school or, or, you know, kind of put out on their own with perhaps a child or two. Yeah.
I think you're right about the adult there at Walnutwood, because I used to be on the board for that. And to be able to help the adults now, and as Donald said, there are fewer and fewer districts that are doing anything like that.
And I agree with you, years ago, and I mean, I truly mean, you know, decades ago, adult school in, in, in Folsom Cordova, Bob, you remember, used to offer classes just like, uh, just like Los Rios, you know? Typing in computers and languages and all sorts of things. And, and then they, they, that's when they, that's when the building was at the campus at Cordova Hot, uh, before it moved over to Walnutwood, and then they stopped doing that kind of thing. And their, whatever they're able to offer has just been pruned back and pruned back. But Walnutwood is also one of the places that Explore Rancho goes and brings in all sorts of people for their, um, their information and education fairs. This could be quite valuable. But this is the first time they've done this?
This is the first time they've requested funding.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm voting for that, and rather than not, when, because you have so few opportunities for the adults to do that. And I think that's something that we need to support, just like we support the kids, we need to support the adults too when we can.
And, and, you know, for some of us, it's probable that the term adult here applies to people who are really quite young, like in their early twenties.
My grandson, oldest one is 20. Don't ask him what he is, because he'll tell you.
I would tell you the age is very, but I would guess that a lot of, um, a lot of their takers for, for this kind of program are going to be the kids that are graduating out of Walnutwood.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, and again, going back to my experience at Sac City, we closed Fremont Adult School.
Oh, yeah.
Old Marshall.
Yeah.
Repurposed those completely, that's now the ballet and a bunch of other things, right? So, you, you can see, like, I mean-
Yeah.
And, and that, you know, I consciously did that. We, we went from 7 million and then they kept cutting it, and we just moved on, so.
Okay, so let's all agree to fund the, the one year.
Okay.
Just, I just urge caution, council, because cuts are coming to Folsom Cordova, as they are to every school district in the state due to increasing cost of benefits for employees. And we look like an opportunity, I'm sure, for school districts to say, oh, we can continue our program with city funding.
I'm sure you're right, David, but that's why, you know, we're probably, probably the best thing we've heard is the fact that they, uh, offered some very specific measurable, some very specific, uh, me- metrics that they were going to try to achieve, so we have something to compare if they should come back and ask for money again.
I think this is far from our, um, level of expertise, so-
It is.
Metrics are, of some kind, are going to be important to evaluate, how we do this versus, you know, dozens of other potential cut programs in the school district.
Absolutely.
Do we have any cards on this page?
We do. Megan, are you still in the room? Megan, you'll have three minutes. Megan is speaking on item 37, which is A Touch of Understanding, on page seven.
Good evening, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Megan Adamski, and I am the Executive Director of A Touch of Understanding. I wanted to clarify why we are requesting this funding. Last year, the district submitted a proposal to bring A Touch of Understanding to the Rancho Cordova schools. That proposal was funded, which we thank you for. However, that funding was only for the school portion. When A Touch of Understanding presents our in-school disability awareness workshop to a school, the schools are only able to pay about half of what it truly costs us to present that workshop. So we rely on grants, fundraising, and donations to make up that other half, which is why we submitted this proposal this year, would be to make up that other portion that was not funded last year. We, next year, we hope to write a joint proposal with the school district. I'm open to any questions you may have.
How do you normally get paid the other half?
Grants, fundraising, and donations.
So we've already paid for half?
The, the school portion, so when we present our workshop, the school pays for a portion, so your funding last year paid the school portion. It did not, it did not support our portion.
That's one way to put it. The other way would be is that we covered the cost for the school district.
Correct.
So you're getting funded.
But, but we also, but our agency relies on grants and to make up that other portion. So, that's why we thought we would write to make up that other portion, because we're, because we have to, we are, we're always at a deficit every time we're presenting a workshop.
So where are you looking for your other grant?
We look to, we just got funding from Safeway, from Rayleigh's, from City of Roseville, um, from family foundations, and then we also do fundraisers. We rely on individual donations, business partnerships, a variety of means to provide our workshop to the, throughout the 10 counties and over 100 schools and 11,000 students a year.
So those resources can be used here for some reason?
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Those resources, we're, like I said, we're in 10 counties, and we are at, um, oh, at over 100 schools, presenting our workshop to 11,000 students, so we're always, we're, we're always making up funding for those 100-plus schools. And at each school, we do, on average, two workshops, so we're providing over 200 workshops a school year, so we are constantly looking for additional funding to make up the portion that is not paid by the schools for those 200 workshops.
Let me ask it a different way. You said the city of Roseville, so they pay the hun- the 100%? They're paying for the school and you? And the portion that you're supposed to be fundraising?
They're, no, they're, they're not paying for the schools. The schools, it comes out of their school budget or their PTA, PTC, the schools pay. And then what we get from the grant from the city of Rancho Cordova, or sorry, from the city of Roseville pays for our portion.
Okay.
But the schools have the investment themselves out of their own school budget.
Yeah, I think we've already made a significant investment, I think, in the private, the private sector, yeah, thank you.
Any other cards?
That's all I have for this page.
Back to the drawing board, um, ask council members, what are we leaving on this, number 37? I think move on.
Go to page eight.
Moving on, okay.
Page eight is a continuation of education items, and it's items 41 through 45.
Um, I, I think we need to ask, well, number one, so Stacy, in this regard, um, 42, 43, and 44 don't have a recommendation.
They're recommended in the full amount.
Yeah.
So 60,000 for 42, 13,000 for 43, 15,000 for 44.
I expected you to tell me over here.
I only added a comment to the note if it was less than what they requested.
Sorry. Okay, so, can we, can we, can we be assured again that number 44 is not, that somehow or other campus life is not associated with a religious organization?
So I've personally viewed it, and Daniel personally viewed it on more than one occasion, and there was nothing presented to remotely suggest a religious intent.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I just have to ask, because for years, that's what campus life was.
We attended for hours and on multiple occasions and never witnessed anything.
Thank you for your oversight.
You're welcome.
So item, item 42, um, I think the recommendation is great. I would just call out, you know, Mentors at Cordova, the MACH program, as perhaps the greatest educational success that we've funded, in my opinion. Just viewing the kids who are involved, the impact it's had on them, that, that is a wonderful, remarkable program that we ought to take an awful lot of credit for, for funding. I see it ranked extremely high for, um, Folsom Cordova. And, you know, if I had my wish list, somewhere on here would be MACH at Mitchell and MACH at Mills. Because we, we have so many kids, you just look at the recent survey work the school district was doing with regard to how to spend, uh, the extra dollars they get for at-needs schools, at-needs students. And this is the kind of funding that I think is, is effective for those kids, versus a lot of other efforts we undertake that are, you know, sort of more bureaucratic and go through the motions, but I'm not sure they have a real impact in the end. So, I would encourage, you know, the MACH program, their representatives here, to think about, how do you grow this to encompass more kids in Rancho Cordova?
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree. The only thing I would, as somebody who's spent, well, now, a second career, a second time in my career giving away, or giving away money or investing in communities, is never fund more than they ask, and especially have a plan for what that growth would look like and how you're going to accomplish it-
I agree.
-before you entice them with the check.
I agree.
So, again, I, obviously, they, they just won the award at the Volunteer Awards and everything else, so I think it's, it's going great.
I just think, you know, you put them up against any other thing on this page, and it's, they blow them away.
I think there's some very good programs on this page, too.
Yeah.
Um, and I would agree, um, I think I was one of the ones that invited 916 Inc. originally to apply here. I think the bang for the buck that we've been getting at the funding level that we have is just fine, so I, I don't have a problem with that.
So we can go on?
Are there any speaker cards?
Any card on this one?
Yes, I have a speaker card from Melody Mayer. So Melody will be speaking on item 42, which is the MACH program.
Just wanted to keep it brief, uh, and say we do appreciate the funding that you guys have provided, and we wouldn't be as successful as we are without you guys. And, um, to your comments, David, we actually have already entered into, uh, discussions with some staff at the two middle schools to see how we can pilot it there in this next coming year, and we're actually seeking funding from other sources to cover that, because we don't want everything coming from one pool. So, um, having the city backing for the expanded program that offers it year-round and weekends and all that stuff has really, um, allowed us to take it to a whole different level and, and given us a lot of legitimacy with other funding sources that the city has provided that backing consistently. So we do appreciate that, um, but wanted to let you know we are already, um, looking at other ways to expand further, so we're hoping to make some strides in that in the 2019, '20 school year, so, thank you.
I have one more speaker card on this page. All right, Justin.
Just Justin?
Justin Self.
Uh, good evening, council members, Justin Self with 916 Inc. Just briefly wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to, uh, and, and also to staff for your work in, in visiting our programs this past year. It's been really phenomenal to be in Rancho Cordova consistently and have the opportunity to build relationships with school sites, with new partners, and deepen our relationships with existing districts. We've published hundreds of students now here in the city, and we continue to find that, uh, more and more students in these school sites are coming back to us, saying we saw our friend be published last year, we want to participate, I want to write now, I want to get more involved in reading, and, and it's been a really impactful piece in the schools we've been at. Uh, we continue to seek, uh, matching funds and grow in other schools in Rancho Cordova in addition to these grants, and being here helps us do that, so thank you.
How are you doing on the, uh, the match question here? We encourage people, you know, go find resources other than just ours to fund programs, and I think you're, is this your four?
I believe year three.
I do have the answer for match, unless you have it on the top of your head.
No, 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 I, well, yeah, so, um, for, in past years, we've been successful in matching the program, um, essentially, uh, dollar for dollar. However, uh, this year, this is early in our grant cycle, so we applied for several grants from various different funders who have funded us in previous years, as well as new funders. Many of those grants haven't been decided yet. Uh, there's a, also a State Library grant that we're in the middle of an application for, which would cover this period, um, which would be matching the programs here as well. So it's a, it's a matter of timing, however, we've been successful in the past in matching the programs.
So we funded almost 50.
Their current match is 31,000.
So it's not quite dollar for dollar, but, so you're actually spending 80-something, or 80 maybe, 80,000 to do the program here?
Correct.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cards?
Not for that page.
All right. Anything else from the council? Otherwise, we'll go on to page nine.
Page nine covers items 46 through 52, but we are going to skip 51 and 52 for now.
I will say, um, 50?
Yes.
I get why that is so expensive, um, but David, this is probably something to bring up in our two-by-twos, again with Folsom Cordova, especially with some of the changes in the school board around thematic school offerings.
I agree.
And the fact that, you know, AM Win was going to be one of two things, Russian immersion or Waldorf. And they were so concerned about if they could even find the instructors to do Russian immersion that they, that Waldorf kind of won out, I guess. I mean, you were more involved in some of the committees and stuff, but whether it's Spanish immersion or something else, like, th- these are the types of things we need Folsom Cordova to start wrapping their brain around, and you can see, they didn't even endorse it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
We still have a disconnect, so I'm just bringing that up. We shouldn't fund it, because we don't want to be forcing anybody to do something that they're not engaged in doing with, um, but it just, this is a, kind of a big red flag of why we need to have stronger conversations about thematic learning.
I think you're right, conversation would be very helpful on that.
The Spanish immersion program? So we need, we need to have more schools like STEM, like, like STEM 50, so like STEM Academy, the, so the most successful school that we have in Folsom Cordova is the only open enrollment school that's got its own themed education.
Right.
It's the only one that doesn't have big turnover, it's the only one that sees test scores going up, it's the only one that can fundraise, and part of that's because it, it's just like gerrymandering, you're, you're cracking and packing, right? So you, you open an open enrollment school, and most of the best parents and kids and stuff all kind of cluster into one place. But if you offer different offerings like that, like we have at AM Win and some other stuff, you start to see those gravit-, those magnet schools, is essentially what they are. But the fact that they just zeroed it out, said, yeah, that's not something that's a priority to us at all, a little unfortunate.
Yeah, I completely agree. We have to do something to differentiate ourselves educationally.
Yeah, so, just, I don't want to fund it, but we need to have a bigger conversation.
I, and I didn't understand this one, because, because it seems like 50% of the people at Rancho Cordova Elementary already speak Spanish. And so I, I didn't understand, it seemed as though they were going to offer to teach Spanish. Or was it education for people who are Spanish speakers already?
No, it's a Spanish, immersion is-
Immersion means they take English speakers and stick it in there.
Well, that, that would be my-
It's both.
That would be my, uh, my guess, but 50% of the people over there speak Spanish already.
Right, it was dual-language immersion, so both English and Spanish.
The idea with dual, the idea with, with-
You mean both ways?
Language immersion, right. The idea with language immersion is you start with the foreign language and teach most of it, and then tear off in later grades. That's the, that's the traditional, and again, I don't, I don't remember everything about this proposal, and again, I don't want to fund it, I just wanted to point out that this is a subject that we need to have more conversations about.
So item, uh, 47, I'm a fan of C-Chat. I've attended C-Chat's fundraising, uh, events. I've been a principal for a day at C-Chat. I visited, I approved, you know, I'm, I'm a fan, I'm really glad it's here in Rancho Cordova, but it's a, a regional school with a specific mission. I'm not sure what- I'm not sure why Rancho Cordova specifically would need to fund summer camp for all those regional kids out of our budget.
The other thing that may be going on, I may not be the only one who contributes to them at certain times, like the big day of giving. And I realize that's much smaller compared to what they're asking for, but.
Well, two of us were sponsors to their dinner. So the city was a sponsor to their dinner. Maybe, maybe this is, because we, we had this discussion when it came to the after-school programs in Mather Elementary last year, two years ago? Last year? Last year, was it?
I don't remember which year, but I know which conversation you're referring to.
We talked about if we were going to fund some, if we were going to fund something at a school outside of the city, but we ensure that it was only residents benefiting from it. So maybe the idea here would be if we created a scholarship fund for this camp for students that live here.
I like that idea.
That'd be the alternative.
That's a really good idea.
Like, because we even said this, like, we would fund like science camp for students going to Einstein Middle School if they lived in Rancho.
Right.
This is kind of the same idea.
Really good idea.
Whoever is attending there that is a resident would benefit from it. And I think that, that holds true to pretty much all of the funding that we've done like that, whether it's been Folsom Lake College or something else. So it's probably not going to end up being anywhere near twenty-five thousand, but.
Part of this funds the actual counselors in training, which would be local teens or young adults. And their target is to hire Rancho Cordova teens or young adults.
I'd be fine with that, too.
Leisha King might be here in the audience.
That's not Leisha.
No.
I don't see her. But yeah, maybe, maybe have, maybe put that into the parking lot for, at some point to talk about. But I like the idea if they were to hire counselors that were students or youth from Rancho or teens. And then funding students to go on the camp, I think would be fine if they're residents.
Right, because I believe the twenty-five thousand has nothing to do with kind of scholarshipsing individuals into the program. It was the hiring of counselors, which would be Rancho Cordova.
Okay.
But we can put it in the parking lot if you would like to discuss it more.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it needs to be discussed later simply because we kind of, we're pretty much consolidated on the fact that that's the way it ought to be.
So that's how it should be structured, but if you show, if, if they're committed that they're hiring counsel, like, like, and I don't even know if you could do that as like an equal employment opportunity. Say that you can only work for us if you live here, but if they can do that, great. But that would be.
Then it's a jobs program.
Well, and then again, you know, we have Youth at City Hall and a bunch of other things where we, we fund interns and, you know, I mean, it's, it's not really any different. I mean, to work here, let's say you're, you want to go work at a daycare, you have to get so many early childhood development hours. They would be getting it. So this is workforce development for our residents.
Three weeks for I don't know how many counselors.
You need, you only need, you need to get a certain number of hours before you can even work in a place like this.
I just don't know if that's our responsibility.
To a point, I think it is. I mean, that's one of the things that we.
A bunch of this stuff isn't our responsibility.
Yeah. That we are known for is helping people on that, you know, when it goes back a lot further than that. But nineteen ninety-four, when they were talking about how they're going to use Mather, one, there were two things. It was either going to be a homeless program or it's going to be a program for deaf and hard-of-hearing. And it was a program that was going to be at Mather, it's the only one on the West Coast. But the county decided to do the homeless program instead. That is something that is needed anyway. And I think they have these counselors.
They had the McKinney Act breathing down their neck, too, so.
Well, right now, I think this twenty-five thousand on this is something that's going to be beneficial to the deaf and hard-of-hearing both. And I think that's, counselors are learning that, too. I think it's just worth keeping it.
I'd support scholarships for our kids to attend the summer school.
I would, too. And the hiring of local kids.
Yeah, and again, if that's the biggest cost, I, maybe between now and the next time, have a conversation to see if they can structure that to reflect what we're talking about. Because if they can, I would be comfortable with that funding level. Or a reduced if they, they can't meet all of that.
Okay, so Stacy, I have a process question.
Sure.
When we talk about those rankings from the school district.
Yes.
Do they do rankings in each of our different categories?
So they did a ranking per category, and then I also asked them to provide their top five overall regardless of category, just to see if there were some that really rose to the top.
Okay, because number forty-eight and number two are both ranked fifth in category by Folsom Cordova.
Forty-eight and what was the other one?
Two.
Right, forty-eight and what?
Forty-eight and two, or forty-eight and forty-two?
No, two. Forty-eight and two. But two is in an arts.
Two is in a different category.
Right, okay, that's why I asked, because two's in the arts category, this is in education.
Right.
But then we don't have any information about top five overall in all categories.
I do. I know what their top five is in all categories.
Okay, so you can provide that to us?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Any cards?
I have a speaker card. Linda Burkholder. Linda is probably going to speak on number forty-eight, which is the Family Engagement Summer Academy.
Yes.
Okay.
Linda Burkholder, Folsom Cordova Unified. Thank you so much for allowing me to come. I want to talk about the Summer Academy and thank you for funding us last year. This is a program that is funded by grants from private foundations. Kaiser Permanente has funded it for about seven years. We've had a family foundation that has funded it. And last year, the, the city of Rancho Cordova through Community Enhancement has funded it for the program, which is going to be happening in June of this year. Our, this program is a STEM program. It's a, it's a science, technology, engineering, and math hands-on learning experience for children in Rancho Cordova predominantly. We heavily recruit through our After-School Education and Safety Program at our seven sites, elementary sites here in Rancho. And it also includes an adult component, so we do require a caring adult or a parent to attend two days a week. It's for the full month of June. Four days a week, and then Fridays we hold for field trips and special events. It is just fabulous. If you could have seen it last year, the theme last year at our Twilight Camp was Makerspace. And so the kiddos did four weeks' worth of work with cardboard. I've never seen anything like it. They never got tired of cardboard. They were putting electric lights in cardboard. I thought this, there's no way this is going to work. They were so engaged and enthusiastic. It was fabulous. It's a coding program. So they get coding experience and it's elementary school students that are enrolled. But we also have middle school and high school volunteers called counselors in training that we recruit through Folsom Cordova Unified. And it's a fabulous experience for, for both age groups. And we're, we're really proud of it. We're going into our seventh summer offering this program. It's also important to mention that Folsom Cordova has decided this year not to operate a summer school program.
At all?
At all. Including, last year they did a boost for a week before the first day of school. And they've just decided for a number of reasons that they're not going to do summer school this year. So this is actually going to fill a huge gap.
Is it financial or is it effectiveness?
I think it's a combination of all of the above. As you've mentioned, there are some anticipated funding issues coming up. And so they're looking at what's the biggest bang for the buck in terms of education dollars. And I think there might also be research about the effectiveness of summer school programs. I feel like the Family Engagement Summer Academy is the way summer school ought to look in education because it's hands-on learning. It's very engaging. It brings the families in. Many of our families are monolingual, Spanish-speaking families. So it connects them with the school district as well as with community resources. Very powerful program. Michael Funk, who's the director of the, the Expanded Learning Division at the California Department of Education, visited the summer program last year and told us that it was the best summer program he had ever seen in his twenty-five years in the field.
So when you talk about no summer school, does that also affect the summer school for high school students who need to pick up classes?
I am not, I can't speak to the high school specifically. I don't know if Peter has more information about what's happening at, for high school. We are doing summer school programs for children with special needs. We're obligated to do that. But I know for elementary students, we are not going to be doing summer school.
Okay, so you called it STEM, but in the chart it calls it STEAM.
Sure, because you incorporate art into everything, right? So.
So you are?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's the cardboard and the cardboard projects.
It's just fascinating. They made hero helmets last year and they made movable theatrical stages. And I mean, it was, it's an amazing thing to see, the energy level. And they're doing coding at the same time. So they're learning code.org and doing coding activities.
So can I, to clarify, I didn't hear the whole answer. Did you say Folsom Cordova is not doing summer school at, at all?
They're not doing summer school for the elementary grade levels.
Okay.
Just the ones who.
Except for the children with special needs.
Special needs.
And I'm not sure about high school.
Peter?
It is happening.
Oh, good, okay.
Sorry, don't mean to panic everybody.
No, 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 I just, there's going to be a point of conversation.
Another thing that's important maybe for the council to realize is that we are going to be serving, because this summer we're doing the program in the morning at two sites, at Cordova Meadows Elementary and at White Rock Elementary. And our Food Services Department is going to be serving breakfast and lunch to the kids in the program. And to us, that's a really important aspect of, actually one of the reasons we started the program years ago was to make sure that kids in some of our economically-challenged neighborhoods in Rancho had food to eat.
You know, some of the times it's the only meal or some of them have. I know they don't have breakfast or they don't have lunch, they don't have, but whatever we can offer on that from the school district or anything like that, that's quite a necessary kind of a thing. I mean, it's, well, that's a great thing you're doing that. Well, yeah, but it's also something that's, it's a need.
Mm-hmm. And I think our Food Services Department is actually planning to offer meals at other school sites in Rancho this summer as well. Thank you.
Any other cards?
Not for page nine.
On to page ten.
Page ten continues the education items, and this will be for items fifty-three through fifty-seven.
I'm fine with ten. Anything from, for anyone on this page? Do we have any cards?
We, we. For, who's the applicant for fifty-four? I'm confused. Is it the Children's Museum is asking for it?
No, they just endorsed the project so that if we were to fund it, they were fine with the program taking place at the Children's Museum as part of the rollout.
So, but this is, language of money is its own thing.
Correct.
I just wanted to know that. Okay.
We do have a speaker card.
Okay.
Angela Moore. So Angela's with Beyond the Village Workforce Development Training and Employment Opportunity, which is item fifty-seven.
Good evening. My name is Angela Moore, and we're here to represent the Beyond the Village Project. And I see that there's a recommendation for, make this a pilot program. And we just wanted to really say thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that. As you mentioned, Mr. Terry, these programs in other places, private programs like that are two thousand or more per person. We, we include things in our program like technology training. We actually work with employers so that we can place our clients as part of the program, not just teach them and wish them well as they go out the door. We negotiate salaries with, with employers on their behalf. So we're a full-service organization and we are really looking forward to proving ourselves and hopefully getting the opportunity to take more Rancho Cordova clients next year into our program and, and expanding it from there. I did want to introduce the group to Deanna Vestal, who is actually our Career Path Development Program Services Manager. And she will be working with us to make sure that we're getting our clients through the program and placed and hopefully make you guys proud. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm good with everything on this page.
Stacy, was that the only speaker card? Yes.
On to page eleven.
So we've left education and we are on the other category, and this will cover items fifty-eight through sixty-one. The first item on the page, which is the Meals on Wheels program, has already been approved by council. So this will continue the second year of a two-year request.
What is CC five?
That's just the designation to mean that was a prior city council directive to establish the local community service fund. That just happens to be the fifth fund, which is why it's CC five. So the other fund examples are like Performing Arts Fund, Field Trip and Assembly's Fund.
What did we fund out of this? So I see a half marathon. Can you just remind me?
Sure. So the fund was created in an attempt to strengthen and build partnerships within the community. That partnership might be with a church, it might be with a nonprofit.
Okay, I got it.
Service club.
Service club.
Well, all right. That's all I needed to know.
The, the marathon that's mentioned here?
Yes.
I would have mentioned it before, but I just knew it was going to come up here. So I think strategically as a city, you know, getting an event located here, particularly something that leverages our connection to the Parkway, which is one of the number-one reasons why people moved to Rancho Cordova. The more we're identified with that Parkway, the more we're identified with events like that, the better we look. So there's a nice image play in here, in that event, or in anything similar to that, that utilizes the Parkway. So I would not really want to see us limited to five thousand dollars. I'd want to see us invest what we needed to actually get that event here.
Well, if we do that, is it going to be here?
If we do five, I'm not sure. I think we're speculating.
How much were they asking for?
Seventeen-five?
Oh.
And of which I think, I don't know if there's an advocate in the room for that project, but.
But is that, does that fully fund it?
They were requesting fifteen thousand five hundred.
That was it, fifteen-five. But I think there was a part of that that went back to local nonprofits, because they were looking for ten partners to volunteer with them on race day. They'd pay each partner five hundred dollars, like, you know, do a water station or something like that.
My wrestling team in high school used to pack all of the Wharf to Wharf bags that they got at the end, and we got like five grand for doing it.
So that, I don't think the fifteen-five is necessary to run the event, but five of that was coming back to Rancho Cordova nonprofits through service.
Dershow does a lot of that, too. I, I don't disagree with you, but also, you know, if we're keeping consistent with the funding levels, that's about how much we gave to Epi's. Right? And then I think, I think we did five, the city did five, and I think we all used to kick in another thousand or something. So we did ten, but we took it out of a completely different place.
Yeah.
Just a brand-new event, never happened, don't know how big it's going to be.
It happens elsewhere now. This would be moving it.
Is it as big as Epi's? Is it as famous as Epi's was?
California National Marathon, maybe.
They'd have to run in circles a lot here to stay in, in the city for that one. I'm just saying if we were to talk about, it, it's kind of like when, I can't remember who came in and asked. And to me, to me, I always kind of harken back to like, what's, what's our, our normal expectation for a similar thing? And if we take the biggest darn event that happens, that starts in Rancho Cordova that's like this, right, is the triathlon, which is still happening, I think, right? And they didn't ask for money here, but.
It doesn't start in Rancho Cordova. Epi starts.
Well, it starts across the river. Yes, yes. It finishes, excuse me, in Rancho Cordova. And it's in, mostly run within the city, too. But that, again, we've never done more than ten, and normally it was about five. than 10. And normally, it was about five. So does this rise to the level of saying, yeah, like, you're worth triple what we would normally give Epi's in a given year?
Well, not now, but it's a startup year. We hope they grow it into something bigger. Are we locating it here? I just think there's, there's bang for that. If it's now labeled in Rancho Cordova instead of being in Sacramento.
If this helps you, over the past 12 years, they said they've had 30,000 participants over a 12-year period.
And so it's going to start here and then run to downtown and come back or something? Is that-
Half marathons, I'm not sure.
I mean, they can't stay in Rancho Cordova and run 13 miles. Yeah, unless it's like four laps.
Down and back, down and back in Rancho Cordova, yeah.
You mean that our stretch is five miles, right?
Maybe more.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's about six and a half miles.
There you go. Okay. So-
Well, that was, well, that'd be down-
There and back and a-
Down and back would be it, if they're running a half marathon.
Yeah. Well, I would be fine leaving that in this bucket, but maybe leave it up to staff if they wanted to do more. I mean, obviously, they're recommending five, because that's what they've evaluated the recommendation to be.
I think they recommended five, because I think that should be a standard contribution towards events, is how I read it.
Correct. We're, we were making an attempt to make this a general city sponsorship and make it similar to other events that we've done in the past in terms of the funding donation towards it.
So it's not going to break the bank either way, because we've got 75 here. That would take five of it. If it took all 15 of it, you still have 60 in this fund. So we're debating about how to spend a subset of-
Correct.
Unidentified fund.
Why don't we split it? How about 10?
I would just say, go, go to whatever it takes to get it. Assuming 15, 5 got it, maybe, maybe you can get it for less.
Well, I think that 15, 5, do that, if that's what it takes, then do it, because it's, I like what you have there, the 75. I don't have any problem with that.
Gentlemen, this is recorded.
Yeah. Was it, was it five that, was it five that came back to-
Recording, are you kidding?
No, I-
Nonprofits, is that in the application? Or am I imagining that?
Well, they're looking at, Bob, my point is that there's not a lot of negotiating going on for staff, if you all just said, pay whatever they want.
If we're already just given the parameters, yeah.
We've got a lot of leverage.
Darn that brown act. Shelley knows that trick.
Got to go to close, got to go to closed session and figure that out.
She knows, we said, give her whatever she wants. They're not, they can't negotiate with her anymore. That's why she's laughing so hard.
It does show a 5,000 donation back to youth, but it doesn't specifically say Rancho Cordova. So-
Well, that would have to be a requirement.
I've heard five, 10, and the full amount, so.
I'd leave it to Cyrus to negotiate. He's a very good negotiator.
Yeah, after what you just said.
He'll get us the best deal he can.
Now that you've given me all the leverage I need, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's a lot of logic behind the 5,000, because I think it puts it in perspective to the other things that we've done. Since it's the first year, maybe by managing their expectations, that maybe we would consider some amount higher than that. But we're not underwriting the whole thing. And leave it at that.
Let us do some negotiating, and we'll come back on that.
It sounds, my numbers are almost bigger than Epi's.
Yeah, if I, if I do the math right, it's about two, a little over 2,000.
Well, let's back up. It's way, way cheaper to run just a marathon than to run something that you have to stage boats and bikes and everything else for.
Yeah.
So the, the work to pull off Epi's, there's a reason the family didn't want to keep doing it. It's a lot of work.
I think staff's intent to say $5,000 per event is, as Donald just said, a reasonable thing.
And it puts it into perspective of the other things that we've considered.
Startups, relocations, a little different. If it's gigantic and has a big financial impact on it, that's a different deal. You know, if travel and tourism wants, that's a different deal. If it benefits kids, that's potentially a different deal. There's a lot of factors that go into that. But on its face, it's not, not a bad idea.
I would just say, for the rest of these, I'll just mention on 58, the American, the lower American River Conservancy has already committed a half a million to this project. Likely, there will be, that was of two and a half million that we had to allocate in the, in the winter. They canceled our meeting this month, but an RFP should be going out for seven and a half million to be spent after July 1st, somewhere around there. This was the only thing that got partial funding last time, so it's almost for sure going to get the rest of the money.
Wow.
So this really helps move it back up. So they don't need, they don't really need the 195,000 to probably complete all of this. But the one thing they got scored low on was they didn't have any matching funds listed. Now, now, keep in mind, this is the county that was applying on behalf of Soil Barn. So the county wasn't putting any money into it, so they didn't have any matching. So we had reminded them that if they do this, they will, this project will happen next year. So-
That is also a cue that we need to be sure we have more projects in line for that kind of funding in Rancho Cordova.
Mm-hmm. There were only four applications last time, so we had one of four. So-
But next time, there's going to be 20 applications.
There's going to be more, because there's a lot more money.
And we, and we better be sure Rancho Cordova's lined up in there. That would be criminal if we, if we weren't.
Yeah. The, the big problem was, we don't need to get in the weeds here, but the city of Sacramento had a big, big ask of buying two parcels along the Parkway in their city that was like 2 million, 2.2 million or something. And we pared that down and, yeah, we pared it down from what the original ask was and got it to something that was more reasonable so that it still fit in this and the other small one that was being asked for, for Camp Pollock.
What is it you're recommending?
No, no, same with the staff's recommendation here. So the 95, I think, should be sufficient.
I'm good with page 11.
I just wanted to give some context in case-
You have any cards on this?
About the Conservancy.
No speaker cards.
No cards. Okay. Now on to page 12. Good with page 12.
Page 12 is item 62 through 66.
Yeah, I'm good with this. The only thing is, in my conversations with Habitat, maybe just ask them, I was under the impression that they were going to at least have a priority of targeting veteran homes. To see if that was the case, I, again, I-
They do. They have an emphasis on serving veterans and seniors.
That's in their proposal.
But it's not in the summary, I guess. Okay, good.
It is. It's just towards the bottom.
Is it?
Yep. Fourth from the bottom.
Oh, okay. I totally missed it. Yep, there it is. Thank you.
Stacy, any speaker cards for this page?
No.
On to the next page then.
So we are on page 13, which is item 67 through 72.
I'm good with 13. I wish 71, there was a way to facilitate that happening.
Why can't we do 71?
It's improvements on the church. Is it on a church? I thought they were doing it just off, off near the church. Is it? Community neighborhood healthy garden. I mean, it's building a garden on a church.
So our recommendation wasn't based on whether it was a church or not a church. We were looking at it from more of the perspective that every garden that the city has built so far has been a garden associated with a school site. So we had kind of built-in infrastructure in terms of teachers using it to build curriculum. We had a partnership with Soilborne Farms to continue that dialogue and work being done at the school sites. And then there also seemed to be a concentration of gardens just in the Lincoln Village neighborhood.
Can we refer them to CC5?
Potentially. We would just need to look at it.
Great. Let's do that. So, so then, can I, can I clarify? So if this isn't on their church, do they know where it is?
It's on their church property. The city attorney's office would just need to do further evaluation if we want to consider it elsewhere.
Because all of our other ones have been on public lands of some sort. So they've been at a school or somewhere where the public can access it. This wouldn't-
And this one's aimed at adults rather than kids. I don't know what the ongoing program would be. There's a couple other questions there.
I mean, this is getting back to like true community gardens where people have their own plots. And I mean, this is urban farming.
Yep.
At a tart. But again, it's not, it's on private land. That's not traditionally where you would put these. Next. Yeah, so I'm fine with all of the, all of the recommendations on 13.
Okay.
I do have a public speaker card for page number 13. Angela Fitzgerald.
So Angela is speaking on item 72, which is prevent alcohol and risk-related trauma in youth.
You save me the trouble of having to tell you what the acronym stood for. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'll just kind of briefly tell you what this is. A couple years ago, the former superintendent of schools, Debbie Benton Court, contacted me and said, Folsom High and Vista and Oak Ridge have attended your program for seven years. Why don't we get to attend it? Why aren't we privileged enough to get this kind of education? And I said, well, they got funding for whatever reason, and nobody has stepped up to fund Cordova High. This education came from Canada. I flew up to Canada. I trained it. I looked at all the other educational programs in the area. And they have been doing it in Canada for 35 years. It targets the freshmen and sophomores. And it's not like every 15 minutes where it's a staged production and all the kids come out and watch. But yet, it's targeted the health class and the driver's ed classes. I bus them in to the hospital. I bus in as many as 100 students at a time, which maybe the cost looks high, but when you figure out that's going to educate 400 students within a year, the cost is pretty low. And this education is all about in, teaching them the consequences of engaging in risky behaviors. And that's one thing, you know, we have the education, the book education, the classroom education. We provide sports. We do this. All my kids went all through that. And my kids even said to me after they saw the program, it's like, you know, nobody really, besides you, Mom, taught us about life. And then we have these challenges at schools, and we're faced with bullying, we're faced with the internet, we're faced with this and that. And we don't know how to make the right choices, and we follow our peers, we make the wrong choices, all my kids did, too. And, you know, this program, it's so, there's, you've never seen so many professionals in one area cover every risk-related activity that a kid in high school can get into. We start out with a emergency room doctor who covers so many risk-related activities. We're talking drinking, driving, texting, driving with, not having a seatbelt, not wearing a helmet, drugs, sex before marriage, covers it all. And then we go out to an outside crash scene with the police, the firearm, and the highway patrol. They're all there. The students are engaged in the role-playing, so they pay attention, because it's, when they're actually engaged, they learn. And then we break them into groups, small groups of four. And so it's real close-up, intimate, personal, in their face. We take them through the emergency room. We have four, four brain injuries survivors. We have medical equipment where they use to see what it's like if they're brain injured, how to button a shirt, how to do all that. And I forgot a station. Oh, we have the policeman who does a sobriety, field sobriety test, and talks to the kids about what's going on specifically in their school, what kind of things they're seeing, what kind of problems, and how to avoid them. And then we have a keynote speaker that is the best I've ever seen in my life. And kids are texting him before they actually, he gets in his car, because he tells them about his life, and he also, he motivates them. He tells them, you know, that it's all about, you know, making smart and wise choices, and how, you know, his life, he made them all wrong, and then when he got them right, bang, you know, the, he was so productive, and how kids can be so productive, and how they can be anything they want to be. And he just, the motivation is just amazing. And these kids are coming to him then for answers. They won't go to their parents or anybody else, because they're afraid to, because they're already maybe doing some marijuana or whatever. They're just starting, because they're younger. So, you know, you've got time to steer them away from this and steer them toward the good things. So now we have like a counselor and a mentor and everything.
Please wrap up your comments.
Pardon me?
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the very last thing I'd like to say is, really, it's all, this program's all about teaching them to make smart and wise choices. It improves the communication between youth and their parents, which also benefits the entire community in the long run by teaching them that they have a very, very productive, they can have a very, very productive and successful future. Thank you.
Well, there is no question that that is a message that hundreds of kids in our high schools need to hear, need to live, need to be impacted by, because there's no one doing that now. Maybe Mock, Mock would do that, something like that. Not the field trip portion. But we have hundreds of technically, you know, bicycle districts and homeless kids at Cordova High, who don't have parents that are giving them advice on, on those topics.
It seems like a great thing to maybe be approaching the Mercy Foundation, which has their regional headquarters in, in Rancho, even though this is being held at Folsom Mercy. But-
So they do receive 5,000 from Mercy and 5,000 from State Farm. So in addition to that 10,000, it's 26,000.
So the total cost to do that is 36,000. They need 26 from us.
But it's 6,500. That, that's to hit however many students they're trying to get, but it's 6,500 a field trip, right?
So sixty, sixty dollars a kid.
They take about 100 students per field trip. They're anticipating they would need to do four field trips.
Sixty dollars a kid for four hours, I think, is what I just-
Right. Now, if you want a comparison, when we sent every third grader to the Effion Nature Center, which was essentially a four-hour field trip, we paid to bus them to and from their school site to the location in Fair Oaks, the cost to send across every school district, every third grader, about $9,600.
So there must be a cheaper way to move kids.
There's a lot of costs involved in this one that has to go with paying these professionals to speak to the students.
Ah, I see, I see.
It's an expensive field trip.
Yeah. It's not all transportation cost.
Correct.
I, I would, I would probably prefer to refer this to our field trip budget or fund, and see if we can't support some of it, but not-
Right. The field trip fund in total is 15,000.
No, 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 I get it. I'm just saying that, I mean, it probably needs to be, it may be, maybe it's a more targeted at certain students, not all students.
It was ranked sixth by the school district.
In that category.
In the other category?
Correct.
What outranked it? I wish I had those rankings, too. That would be-
Well, right now, looking at this as a six in the category, if it was, if I was making the list, it wouldn't be six. It'd be number one or two, or, because it's something that I think that a lot of kids, especially the ones that don't have kids, or have one, one, excuse me, one parent or two parents or something like that, they, they need to have that.
I see what outranked it. On the next page, you can see, over on the right, the rankings. Some, and multiple of the higher ranking ones we didn't fund. Things like defibrillators, wall-mounted water bottle refilling stations.
See, the thing, too, is that I, I think there is a lot of influence. What I've noticed in the past few years, since we've asked superintendents, they like us to fund things that are built that stay on campus. So they want defibrillators, they want, the first year, what, Debbie asked for a whole new security system at Cordova High, with cameras and buzzers and all kinds.
Yep.
So again, just because, I mean, we want to hear from our educator, educational leadership, but at the same time, you know, a program like this, we do it, we do it this year, what happens to kids in the following year, right? And so, again, that's why I say, some of these things need, need to stay in the context and the comparison of the other things that we're offering and that we're supporting. So, I mean, yes, this is great, but it is really expensive comparatively to the other field trip programs that we are supporting.
So at the Folsom end of the district, is this paid for by PTAs?
It is, based upon what I heard from the prior superintendent, Debbie Benton Court. In the past, it was paid for either booster clubs, a PTA, or some other organization like that on the Folsom campuses.
Those are the things we don't have.
But that's, that's mainly what we've done with Measure H. And again, even the field trips that we're funding, those are things that PTAs are funding in Folsom. But again, putting it in perspective of everything else that we fund. And again, there's lots of great ideas that we, that we don't fund. So, so I, I would, I would prefer to refer that to the field trip budget. And, you know, maybe we need to look at making that field trip budget a little bit higher. But, I mean, this is a little bit more expensive to send. I mean, how many students go with, at 6,500 per trip?
I believe it was like 80 to 100. I believe it was like eighty to a hundred.
And for nine grand, we can get like every fifth grader at a school. Yeah.
So this is, yeah, this is a tough one, because I don't see anything else sort of in this category other than MOC. I feel like we just funded a bunch of social programs on previous pages, the success of which I'm dubious of. I don't know that this one's the answer. So this is, this is in a zone when, I don't know. I don't know if anyone really knows how well these various things work. I do know that this is an important need at Cordova High. And Kenny, and Prospect.
So this price was only based upon serving Cordova High School students? So if it was going to broaden beyond that school site, it'd be more expensive?
I think, I don't know, I guess the, there is a need, whether it is this program or some other. There is, we need to look maybe further. I don't know. If this has been thirty or thirty-five years old, it's been successful in something, that's for sure. So I worry about high school students. I worry about them all. And it's, the school, the school district isn't doing it. Or if they're only doing it in Folsom because of the PTAs, I don't believe they have the funding and the PTAs in Rancho Cordova to do that, so...
That, yeah, Bob, that's kind of where I get really comfortable with the Measure H expenditure, fulfilling a gap that our kids don't have because of that socioeconomic difference between the two ends of the district. That's probably where I am most comfortable saying, we ought to use Measure H and step into that gap. Because our kids are being denied something that they should, they would otherwise have, except for that gap.
I'd be willing for now not to, not to zero it out and maybe have this as a further discussion at maybe the next meeting. At least to kind of get us moving forward at least.
Sure.
Because I think the rest of this page I'm fine with.
We can add seventy-two.
Yeah, I think it needs to be discussed more.
I will say now, I am not in favor of the full, of funding the entire thing. But maybe some level in there, and we can, the school can work to identify the highest-risk students or something.
Anything else for page thirteen?
No speaker cards.
So again, this is part of my frustration. Yeah, so a van is the most important thing, not...
Rank number one, yeah.
Not education enhancements or things like that. But I think they also look at this as what's most appealing. But you said it was forty thousand over the life of the lease, right? Am I...
It was about thirty to thirty-five over the life of the lease.
Okay. So why would we need to fund it all now?
Forty would be if you purchased a van.
Oh, okay. But we could lower that to ten thousand a year for five years?
We haven't...
Or, or seven thousand?
We haven't actually discussed with the school district a model that would be similar to what we did with Powell. In the past, we just purchased a van.
Okay.
You can ask them if there's a cheaper way to maintain their fleet. Maybe state law doesn't allow them to maintain a fleet that way.
Why don't we buy, why don't we lease it? Let them have it. Or, I, I mean, I'm sure from a legal standpoint or something, we have to figure that out. But let's come up with, I mean, if we just did that for somebody else, I mean...
Well, the, the reality is that a five-year commitment is close to forty thousand.
Right.
So if you do agree to forty thousand a commitment, my suggestion is that you encumber it. You, this is not...
Well, I don't have to encumber this year.
You don't want to kick it down the road.
But if they, but if they keep the van for ten years, if that's how they manage their fleet, then the second five years, they'd still have one under their strategy. Under ours, we'd have to renew the lease or get another vehicle. So that's the discussion I think you have to have with them.
But the cash flow, I guess I disagree with you, Cyrus. I'm saying that if we know, if we know that we're going to only, that we're only going to pay ten thousand a year, then you would encumber future dollars. What's the difference? If not, if not, you're, it's forty grand sitting in a bank account that we're just paying out, yet I have to take it out of this year's budget. That's the whole reason of borrowing.
Yeah, I think that my point is that it's a forty thousand dollar commitment. Whether you pay installments or, or you pay it now, it's a forty thousand.
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm looking at forty thousand, and we've already looked at a handful of things that we do want to fund that aren't on this list. And if that's ten thousand, then we have thirty thousand to spend somewhere else.
So in essence, you're willing to make a four-year commitment.
Yeah. I mean, essentially, that's what we did with Powell, right?
I'd, I'd want to have the discussion with them of, that's the cheapest way to get this thing over whatever time period they have in mind.
I mean, again, David, even to your point, if in five years they trade it back in, but again, it's only ten thousand a year for us on a long-term commitment, that's still cheaper each year. Yes, we could buy it now, and we don't have a cost next year. But we would have more money now for other things.
But if we, but if we went your way, and in their alternative, they would keep it for ten instead of four years?
Assuming, assuming they could keep it for ten.
Right. Then they're getting another six years or whatever of service out of it, that we would be kind of shorting them versus what they're asking for.
Yes. You could also say that the maintenance in years five through ten might be...
That's the question.
Far exceed what getting another one would be, too. So there's a bunch of ways to look at it, but...
Let's find the most efficient way.
I'd want to explore other financing options. And just see if there are alternatives to that that would give us savings this year for things we're working on.
Just find the efficient route.
I think I'm fine with the rest of this page.
I'm good with the rest of this page.
Have we funded this hideout thing before?
Can't talk about that.
Oh. At all?
Nope.
Not until page fifteen.
Well, okay. Are we on page fifteen?
We are.
Oh, okay, great.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Any comments on fourteen from the public?
Page fifteen.
Nope. She doesn't have anything on that.
At this point, I have a contract with CRPD. I'll be excusing myself.
Garrett, there is one last item before you leave. There's item eighty-one. Which is to purchase a buddy bench for the playground at Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School.
Have we done this before? This sounds really familiar.
We did in, I believe, fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
We've also had students that have asked from our discretionary accounts.
That's what I'm thinking of.
This is a very well-used strategy. I think it's a great idea. Wish more schools would ask for it.
So is this the second buddy bench?
No, I don't, I don't think they have one.
Is it Sunrise that did it before?
No, it was a school within Folsom-Cordova.
Oh, okay.
It says plural.
Buddy benches?
Yeah, it's more than one.
Because twenty-three hundred's a lot of money for a bench.
Yeah.
They're going to build it under the ed code, who knows?
No, they're, they're specially designed. They literally say on there, like, nobody, nobody sits here alone. So if you go and you sit there, somebody's supposed to go over and sit with you.
Multiply by four.
No, that's the Park District.
Over on the right, first on the category.
I think we're done with eighty-one.
Okay. So the next three that we're going to discuss, which is thirty-six, seventy-seven, and then we've also added twenty-three, those are all related to Cordova Recreation and Park District.
I'd approve the recommendation.
Wait, so twenty-three, I just want to remind myself of what we're talking about.
Okay, so once again, I want to speak to number thirty-six. It's only two thousand dollars.
Thirty-six.
It's, it's...
Well, this is the thing over, that they all came in for last year, right?
Right.
Yes. So this would just fund the design. It would not actually fund the construction, which would be a later ask.
And I understand.
This just funds the architect.
Are there any members, are there any members from Rancho Cordova?
Yes, there are.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, it says from the, there are fifty from the region.
Well, we have people in the audience who are sitting here who have been playing batonk out there for decades.
What's the total project cost? Because if we do this, then we're going to have to do the next.
Perhaps there's money available from SMD to provide the lights.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with two grand, I think. I'm, I'm, pay the two grand, and then let's see what it actually costs.
Absolutely.
You know, once they have the plan, maybe they can even work to get some fundraising done anyways.
What's the total project cost? Twenty-three.
Well, they don't have a plan. How would they be able to answer that question?
They, they requested it before.
Yeah.
I don't recall the total cost in the past. One thing we would want to see is an actual letter from CRPD endorsing the project, because at the time that they submitted the grant application, they did not include any type of endorsement from the district, which would be the property owner.
And our relationship with the district is better than it was, but I do remember, recall, the Sun River...
Yeah.
One took, I mean, even when we budgeted for it, it was substantially more...
And it turned out to be a great project.
No, it was, but it, but it took eighteen months to figure it out.
And the cost went up by ten or something.
Hmm, it wasn't that much, but it was darn close. So I would think, let's use the, where did the two thousand come from? Is that how much it's going to cost for them to design it, or in working with the Park District to design it?
To hire somebody to design it.
Because, because again, the issue that we ran into with Sun River was the neighbors all decided, this is what we want, and this is how much it costs to buy that stuff. But to design it to ADA standards and everything else that they have was way more expensive. So maybe put this one in the parking lot, do some more research, and figure out, in talking with the Park District, what this would take, just to do the, just to do the plan.
Correct. Plus, we would want to make sure they were supportive of any changes to their own facility.
Right. I mean, it, it's already there for that thing, for that purpose. So, I mean, it's not, they're not drastically altering the use or anything, which they were with Sun, with Sun River. So it shouldn't be that expensive. But if two thousand is just a number we pulled out of a hat because an architect said that they would do it, and maybe they're not qualified to, you know, or certified to be designing parks in California or whatever else. So maybe figure that out first. But I, I wouldn't want to say no to two grand for something that clearly is a draw to the city.
That's the way I see it also.
And you don't have to be part of the club to attend.
I do have a public speaker card for this item.
Today's not a good day to say no to French culture, either.
So is it, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce your first name.
Fund them two grand.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
We all have kids who went to school together. That's how long they've been here.
Long time, long time.
Good evening. So my name is Christophe Saravian. I'm the current president of the Club Français de Sacramento. And that is Colette Evans on my left. And she was the former president of the club. We're both highly and very much involved in the club each and every day. Just want to let you guys know that we're a nonprofit company. We're all volunteer. A few things about our club. It started in nineteen forty, and the Petanque Club was actually created in nineteen ninety-five. The club is at the Mathur Sports Complex, and it was built by our own peeps, all right? We are the ones that built that court from the ground up. So it's, it's very important that we promote the positive image of Rancho Cordova, and we do that each and every time. We invite people to come and play at the courts, and anybody can come and play at the courts and does. And that's on a daily basis. We have practices that happen a couple times a week. And we have people of all ages that are part of our club, which makes it really unique. We, we are a club that incorporates from as young as fifteen to as old as ninety-one. And we're a very intercultural club. So we're all, you know, we, we integrate everyone into the club, which is a bonus to everyone involved. One of the things that I want to mention is that we have a couple of national champs at our club. And we had the opportunity to have, one of them is sitting actually in the back. We have quite a few of the board members in the back, and one of the national champs is in the back. She lost in the world qualifier, and she was going to represent the U.S. in the World Games. Just to give you an idea, Petanque in the U.S., there's six thousand qualified people that play. France is the largest with six hundred and eighty thousand. But we're probably last in the world as far as making it, you know, as a sport, climbing. So we're kind of like the Jamaican bobsled. So we need as much help as we can. We have a national champ. We have actually two. We're trying to incorporate and do the best we can with what we have. Our courts, the issues that we've had lately is in the last twenty-four months, we have had four break-ins to our shed because there's improper lighting. So our players do not feel safe at all going in any time near when dark sets in because there's no lights, period. We've had to have the police remove unfortunate homeless residents that were there. They were just taking over the courts. So we're not asking much. We just like our, our team and our peeps to go to represent the city and the city of Rancho Cordova. And we want to make it a safer environment for everyone. Ultimately, that's our utmost concern. So we thank you for listening. I know we weren't here last year. I was actually overseas working, but we all have jobs like you, and we appreciate you taking the time to hear us, albeit late, but taking the time to hear us. Colette?
Well, you know, what do I say after you, Christophe? You said it all. I mean, we have been here many years, and we like to keep growing and growing and more. Originally, mostly French people were playing that game, but now a lot of Americans are really interested into it. And we're welcome, all of you, to come and see us play and play with us.
And if you don't know what Petanque is, I don't know if you all know what Petanque is. Everybody that comes by the court says, "Oh, bocci." It's not bocci.
Uh-oh, no.
It's the cousin to bocci. It's the meaner version. I invite you to go on YouTube, check it out. It's a fun sport, and you're all invited to come, okay?
Wonderful.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Merci, Linda.
How many, how many of your fifty members are from Rancho Cordova?
Right off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I can tell you that Colette and her husband, who are in the back, are from Rancho Cordova, and they're probably the original members that created the club. If I had to guess, I would say probably about twenty-five to thirty percent of our club.
And you obviously have your events in Rancho Cordova.
Yes.
Is your nonprofit based in Rancho Cordova?
Correct.
Oh, good. Can you change your name to Rancho Cordova?
We'll look into it.
Very good.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have added item thirty-six for further discussion with the Park District and others.
I also have a speaker card for the other item on this page, Application Seventy-seven, Brandy Dion.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Dion. I'm a recreation supervisor for the Cordova Recreation and Park District. I oversee the youth, the teen, and aquatics programs out of the Hagan Community Center. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share the information regarding the Community Enhancement Fund as it pertains to CRPD's request. CRPD is requesting funds to enhance the hideout at the Hagan Community Center. The hideout is a teen center that operates an after-school program for Rancho Cordova teens, as well as summer camp programs for the middle school students in our city. CRPD is requesting funds to purchase a ten-passenger van and funds to purchase a set of Chromebooks. The van will allow us to expand the number of students who are currently attending from Mitchell Middle School, and will also reduce the amount of time that the students are sitting unsupervised at Mitchell while our staff are currently shuffling the students in a four-passenger vehicle. The van would also benefit our summer campers by allowing the teens to access the Lincoln Village Community Pool on a daily basis, as well as other local field trip destinations throughout the summer. The purchase of Chromebooks will allow teens to complete their homework at the program during the designated homework hours, and will allow staff to integrate STEM activities into the weekly planning. Many of our teens in the program are struggling to complete their homework during the after-school hours because many do not have access to computers or the internet at home, which forces the students to go in early and/or miss their time at the hideout so that they can use the computers at the school library. CRPD is grateful for this opportunity, and we hope that our projects will be considered for funding. Thank you.
So you have about eight students a day at the hideout?
No, we, we service roughly twenty-five students between Mitchell Mills and Cordova, but we're transporting students from Mitchell and we're not opening to additional students because right now it's taking us over an hour to shuffle the students from Mitchell to the Hagan Community Center.
So I saw thirteen hundred visits per year, about a hundred and eighty school days. That'd be about eight students a day.
But that's unique, like unique students that are coming through. So we're averaging roughly twenty-five to thirty kids daily.
Thirteen hundred visitors? That would be extraordinarily high.
Throughout.
She's saying the same twenty-five kids may attend several times and therefore the number of visits to the site is much higher. So that same kid may go every day during the school year.
Correct.
I'm trying to figure out where thirteen hundred comes from then because that won't explain it.
The big issue here has always been the transportation because it's in and out-of-the-way corner of the world and it's not, you know, the, the kids from Cordova and from Mills can get there, but nobody from Mitchell can get there.
So on an average day, you have twenty-five kids?
Yes.
Okay, let's weigh it from where it was.
Thank you.
So in addition to thirty-six and seventy-seven, which show up on the printed page, we also moved item twenty-three, which was the filled renovations through the coordination of Cordova Community Council Foundation and the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association since it also touches potentially CRPD fields. So our recommendation was to fund the full request at eighty thousand.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I am too. It's, no problem with that. Twenty-three being done, let's go back to thirty-six. Just maybe I was reading something when something was decided, but didn't me approve the, decide to approve the two thousand?
Uh, no, no.
For thirty-six?
No, we recommended that staff work with the applicant in the park district to shore up the, the realness of that number.
Correct.
Yeah. So we're gonna continue to investigate it. It's not a no, but it's not a yes either.
We have it under the further investigation.
Anybody else disagree with me?
Which item was that?
Thirty-six, the Petonk Club.
Yep, I'm getting that page.
Get it back.
Uh, the, you know what? The TV, the sound's not working back there, so he's not gonna know unless he's watching the teleprompter.
And worst teleprompter I've ever seen. The, the words on the teleprompter don't match what's being talked about. They are unintelligible.
So I believe we are moving on to page sixteen. And page sixteen were several related items that we grouped together for a further discussion with council. They are all related to multicultural events that in the past have been hosted by either the Sacramento Telangana Association or ONCAR. And staff's recommendation was to hopefully have these two organizations partner together here in Rancho Cordova and provide an event that would highlight at least two of the four items that they're suggesting amongst the four applications. So we are recommending a five thousand dollar overall commitment, similar to what we were suggesting for other events in Rancho Cordova, but we're looking to get feedback from you if you feel this is an appropriate approach or to hear from the public if they have any comment.
You know, I have to say, what I said to Jerry Jewell applies to this. When I looked at that brochure that you all brought back from the National Endowment for the Arts, there were so, several categories in there that were absolutely perfect for multicultural events, spreading of different cultures, popularizing different culture, different celebrations of different cultures among the community. And it just, it seems, it seems so logical that, that we couldn't, that we should be able to pick up some of this. This is something that community council, that Telangana, that ANCOR, that, the Children's Museum, things like the Light Parade, they should all be able to qualify for some of this money.
We agree. That's one of the reasons that we're suggesting five thousand because we think there's other potential funding sources, but we also see value in the events.
We're waiting for the, had the speakers talk.
Page sixteen. Is that correct? I stepped out of the room for a second to, okay. Anil?
Yeah.
Good evening, council. So I think there is one specific festival here, Festival of Flowers. It has its own unique thing as during last year, I indicated this one. This festival is the only festival across the world which honors the women. And this year we are significant in the Prime Minister of New Zealand played this particular festival to elevate the woman empowerment and all those things. Not only Prime Minister of New Zealand, but the Governor of Detroit also actively participated in this festival. I'd like to request to separate this particular festival apart from other festivals and request to fund at the full funding level. If you notice it, last year, the city granted fifteen thousand dollars and this year I came back and say, I have a lot of private partnership and I'm asking only thirteen thousand dollars for that festival. And I, I told like four years back when Dr. Sander first time approved the funding, I asked specifically, help me to stand up this festival up to twenty-twenty. And we are already seeing significant private partnership into this festival and we are keep asking the less funding. I'm sure next year I'll come back and ask little less funding on this one. And coming back to the other festivals, this year we already partnered with the Children's Museum and again, this year we are also going to partner with the travel and tourism and I do not have any issues with working with any other organization. Bringing the communities together, for that sake, if I have to kiss the caterpillar, I'm ready to kiss the caterpillar. So I request council to fund the Festival of Flowers at the requested funding and we will be okay with the, what are the five thousand dollars that staff recommended to combine with other organizations to celebrate the Festival of Colors that you all experienced a couple of weeks back at the Children's Museum. And this year we also want to bring the International Kite Festival. It's not related to the particular community or anything. We celebrate April as the National Kites Month and when I talk to the travel and tourism, they're really excited about this one and they want to be partner with us. And so I request, the Festival of Flowers is the one key event that is unique to our neighborhood and people are coming all over the state and neighboring cities.
I love the idea of starting the kite festival again. They used to do this over in Ansel Hoffman Park on, in Carmichael, and it was absolutely delightful. People came and brought the most unique kites every, from everywhere. It was marvelous.
Yeah, I've been to the, the big, big one, which is Long Beach, Washington, and they're a lot of fun, but that's out on the beach. I'm surprised you do anywhere, anyone do them anywhere with their.
Long Beach in Washington State?
Long Beach, Washington, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just over the border from Oregon, just up from, I can't remember. But I've never seen one near trees, so even doing Ansel Hoffman seems crazy to me.
We, we plan to do it at Anatolia, that kite festival, Anatolia and Anatolia.
Good idea while you have small trees.
Can I just, I just want to understand that you said the five thousand is sufficient to, to supporting the rest of these?
No, five thousand is sufficient for the seventeen, nineteen and twenty.
Okay.
But the, the number eighteen, the Festival of Flowers, it's a unique and it's cost us twenty-five thousand dollars and we are bringing almost like a fifty percent of it.
Yeah, they're one of the groups that's actually going and getting the money. They actually see the requests going down as the group goes up and this happens to be kind of one of those signature events that Rancho Cordova is known for is the Festival of Flowers and it seems to be getting bigger and bigger, bigger, and I don't really want to see that cut down to five thousand. I like the fact that this is one of the few groups that actually is right now going out and getting its own funding.
So would seventy-five hundred be sufficient between all of those?
No.
Staff is recommending five thousand for all four, not for each of the four.
No, I, I understand. But he's saying fully fund the request for the Festival of Flowers, which is twenty-seven fifty and five thousand for the remainder.
No, no, no. He's saying fully fund Telangana Flower Festival for thirteen thousand.
I'm looking at Festival of Colors. Okay, you're saying twelve thousand.
Yeah, then it's five grand. He, he says he can spread between the other two to make three.
What's been our funding history? What did we do last year?
Last year we did slightly more than thirteen thousand for the Festival of Flowers. We did, I believe, five thousand towards some of the ONCAR events and then we did a small amount, maybe seventeen hundred for the Festival of Colors.
And I want to bring one important, I, I don't want to specifically talk about the other organizations, but we as a Telangana community, we live and breathe in this community. When you look at the other people, you only see them when they come for the, collecting the checks. They, they, they do not understand soul of our community.
Let's not get too far into, you're representing you. So, and, and I, and I get that these events have grown by leaps and bounds and you are fundraising your own stuff. I just want to kind of keep it within, again, within context of what we've done in the past because a lot of organizations, we've said like year over year, like we want to see our investments going down necessarily, not, not, not continuing to grow so that we can actually fund other things too. I, I might be comfortable doing maybe ten for, wait, so where's the, the Festival of Flowers is thirteen thousand and then, so maybe fifteen thousand?
Let's just do the Festival of Flowers and the other two events and give him five for that and he'd be fine. So.
So eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah. So he can do the Festival of Flowers, which we need to keep that growing, but he's actually, you know, in another couple of years, he won't need money from the city, unlike everything else we're doing. He's actually going in the opposite direction, which is the right direction. So I want to support that. Plus, that event's good for the city. It's one of those.
Do you feel that's true that you won't be asking for as much from us?
During my first grant application, I asked like, support me up to twenty-twenty. I'm pretty confident that I won't be asking this much funding at all.
Okay, I'm good with eighteen.
What about seventeen?
Your good.
Number seventeen on the list.
Oh, he's not.
I'm like, are you really going, I say eighteen, you say seventeen?
That was funny though. You're like seventeen-five.
No, the David.
Seventeen-five and a quarter. Let's get this, make this deal today.
Seventeen-four ninety-nine.
I know.
Some of the requests coming from the seventeen also including eighteen, nineteen and twenty. It's a.
Well, he's not part of the ANCARI group.
Yeah.
So that, that, that group's not here to speak for themselves.
So, so I would say this, that you'll need to continue to come to some of the other meetings, but I think for now, let's, I, I would be comfortable saying, let's shoot for eighteen for, over these three, so thirteen for that and five for the rest. And then see if we can find out much in savings across the other things. Because what it means is some of these other things that we've been talking about are something that we're about to talk about. Again, we're gonna need to find some savings in certain places.
Sure you don't want to do seventeen-nine ninety-nine ninety-nine?
We don't want crazy math at the end.
Have we talked page sixteen enough? Can we go? Seventeen? Thirteen and a quarter.
So I have two people for the eighteen. Are we?
I'll go with seventeen-nine-nine.
Ah, you guys.
I think people whether in the finance are going, no, I don't want to have nine-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine.
It'd be entertaining. Can you ram into the half nickel?
Does that proposal to zero out number seventeen then?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be zeroed out. They would be included.
Shared in the five.
In the Festival of Colors and they would be included in the kite festival.
Oh, it's an overlap?
Yeah.
Correct.
That looks like a double application, but it's an overlap. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, council.
So moving on to page seventeen, these items represent several things that are related to sports, whether that's growing the capacity of an organization, marketing efforts as well as kind of a strategic approach to addressing high school athletics in particular. So when we went through these applications as a committee, we felt that we, we wanted to recommend an overall commitment by the city of a hundred and fifty thousand per year for a two-year period and to make it more strategic so that if we were going to do something like an athletic improvement plan, it wouldn't just be focused on a single school. So you'll notice Application twenty-six, it primarily focused on Cordova High School. We felt the approach was good, but we would like to see it broadened and include the middle schools as well as the other schools within that same district such as Kenny or Prospect or Walnut Wood. So that any requests that were submitted by the school district that were related to sports, they would all be prioritized by the district in a way that we were addressing all athletic programs and not just one. So our overall recommendation was a hundred and fifty thousand per year with a broader focus. So you'll notice that items twenty-seven through thirty-three were all related to Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, just another school site. And item twenty-four was more related to recreational leagues within the city, so it wasn't tied specifically to a school site.
Why, why did the school districts rank something that's RCAA?
Because they need to involve the school district to actually have the program implemented.
Their facilities.
It's their facilities that they're advertising on, et cetera.
Oh, this is, this is marketing for RCAA. This isn't school district stuff. They shouldn't even have a say in it.
There's a couple other ones that were similar to that that I was surprised that the school districts weighed in on. I like the idea of, of saying one fifty or if it was a hundred or whatever and say, let's fit within that budget because, yes, these are all worthy things, but my, my biggest struggle that I have here is there's, what, one, two, three, four, five, six out of seven are full Cordova only. And we still have, probably we're getting close to a third of the residents don't live in full Cordova. And so I like the, the league promotion because that's citywide.
Yeah.
But just having a fund that says, okay, this is full Cordova's money without, I mean, if you're gonna make a fund like this, then go ask for more applications from Sac City Unified and from Elk Grove.
If those schools had sports programs, perhaps they could apply.
Well, no, but that's easy to say that considering the high schools aren't in the city.
Correct.
But their program, but, but a third, a third of our residents would get no support for youth sports even though they're participating in them.
They need to go to Rancho Cordova School. There's a benefit.
They do.
No, they don't. They're going to Rosemont High. It's not a Rancho Cordova school.
Sure it is. They're, they're residents of Rancho Cordova.
It's not in Rancho Cordova.
It's irrelevant.
Okay, but Carver.
We've talked about this before. We talked about it when we talked about after-school programs for Mathur.
Carver is located in Rancho Cordova and a significant number of the kids don't live in Rancho Cordova.
Right.
All right, so it works both ways.
What we're saying is one-third of the city, in, in looking at this as a funding priority, a third of the city, we're not investing in their youth sports experience.
Well, we are when they're kids. This would be high school.
So they're not important when they're in high school to us?
There's, there's no easy way to do this because the school districts refuse to cooperate with the city.
And any way you look at it, Donald, Elk Grove Unified transfers their kids every year. You don't start off at, at one high school in Elk Grove and be guaranteed of graduating from that high school. They have zero high school loyalty like, like, like the Lancers.
And our kids are getting chopped up between high schools, right?
Absolutely. They get transferred around. The boundaries get changed every year depending on where there's, where there's extra space. We've got.
Your siblings going to different high schools that I'm aware of.
We've got one of, one of these, one of our family members lives in, has lived in Elk Grove for the last twenty-five. We've got one of one of these, one of our family members lives in, has lived in Elk Grove for the last twenty-five years. They have three kids. All three of those kids graduated from a different high school.
Again, I I'm I'm not going to sit here and defend one or the other. I I'm saying that you can make a clear conclusion here that two-thirds of the city is getting investments like this and a third of them based on where the kids are living. It's irrelevant.
So, you know, we could, we could overcompensate, we could overcompensate in other education ways, but this one is programmatically extremely difficult to do.
I would agree, but I it's still a problem.
I don't know. How do we, how do we sponsor, you know, however many kids are coming out of Lincoln Village that go to Rosemont? I don't, I don't know how we help out an athletic program that way. That's that's a very odd structure. But if you do the same thing at Cordova, you don't just help those kids, you also help the image of this community. Because there's only one high school identified with us.
Well, we're going to get to council-led stuff, but there there is something I I wanted to bring up about Sac City Unified.
Are you, are you, you contribute to kids who go to Pleasant Grove, it does absolutely nothing for Rancho Cordova?
No, it boosts Elk Grove's image.
Absolutely.
They're still residents of ours.
They are, so maybe there should be another way to to compensate. You know, while they're in school here, for example, there might be a way that we would do more stuff for elementary schools in Elk Grove than the Sac City Schools than we would for our Folsom Cordova Elementary Schools. And that may be a balance.
I'll just bring it up now because Stacy was gonna, was gonna, was gonna ask for it anyways about council-led stuff, but, you know, considering the struggles that Sac City Unified is probably going to experience this coming fall. And if you're an odds maker, they're going to have a very big problem. So the superintendent was going to do kids that were behind in grade level and performance in reading and math. He was going to have targeted summer school programs to catch them up in first, third, and seventh. Um, so I actually have pricing for that if we wanted to do it. And that would end up being the only school in Sac City Unified that was actually offering those.
Summer school?
Mm-hmm.
Folsom Cordova's not offering summer.
That's at AM when?
This would be one of the two.
Yeah.
But it was something that he had proposed and then the next week they got hit by the county and he had to cancel all of it. So I'm just throwing out that those, maybe those are the ways that we look at it. Um, but I didn't know about Folsom Cordova. I do know that Elk Grove still offers it and Sac City wanted to, but Sac City doesn't offer summer school for anything anymore. But in talking to the superintendent, this this was his one big idea that he was hoping to do when he became superintendent, and then he had to give it up just for budget cuts. So something like that where it's like, because again, and somebody on this council asked me, you know, how do we leverage, you know, this crisis in some way? And to me, it's 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 how do you look at this and say, how do we make sure that Lincoln Village doesn't fall off a cliff? Because what's going to happen, when you talk about the image of the city, is that part of town is going to be the only part of town that's in state receivership, if that's what happens. And so what do we do to make sure that that isn't the one place you don't want your kid? So maybe that's that. But again, and again, I I'm not suggesting the solution to what's on this slide right now when we're talking about these sports programs, but it still is a glaring problem. And David, I, there is no easy answer to it. I I get it. But maybe it's having a fund so that if residents that are living in Lincoln Village and are going to Rosemont High and can't afford to pay the fees to play football or something like that, that we could fund them or something. But we need to come up with something that reflects the fact that a third of our residents don't go to these schools. And again, that's not saying I'm opposed to supporting Cordova High or any of the other ones. It's just we have a lot of people that don't go there and are and never are because they're never going to redraw those those boundaries. So I don't know what the answer is today, but I would support roughly this amount of one fifty and then probably work with staff to come up with what the priorities are. I love the idea of paying for wrestling mats, too.
I think the, I think the one fifty, and Stacy, maybe you can help me out here, but this is a substantial cut over what we've done before.
In prior years, council did approve about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that went towards a strategic plan that just addressed Cordova High School football programs, and that was spread out over a three-year period.
That was the helmet program.
Correct, as well as conditioning and some other items added each year.
And the irony is, you know, this, these, this list got selected by staff. It got put together here. The thought was, everything else is now off limits that we've talked about, so you got to cut this. The irony is, we've asked for years for Cordova High School, for the school district to come back with a plan that address everything that's going on at the high school. Because what we were getting before is sort of piecemeal. You know, uniforms here, helmets here, trainers here, weightlifting equipment here. We didn't know what the big picture was. So what we've got in front of us right now is the big picture number. Item twenty-six, and it's not just a number pulled out of thin air. This number represents a lot of work by the district's new athletic director, Peter Maroon, who's here. And it also represents, in a way, not completely, but partially, the gap that exists between schools and the other end of the district and school and our high school with regard to what parents are contributing to their kids through parent organizations. This is approaching that gap. It is not as big as the gap. It's approaching it, though.
Well, and it sounds like, I mean, if if you look at Folsom Cordova's priorities, twenty-six is number one. I mean, arguably, and again, we're going to have to find saving somewhere. If you funded that or even most of that, and then these would have to get in line for a portion of twenty-six.
I would think that, and we have to ask some questions about thirty and thirty-one, as safety equipment at a middle school. I don't, I'm not quite sure why they're here or how that works. But twenty-seven and twenty-eight could be a part of twenty-six if they ranked. And Peter can talk about how they're going to administer that exactly. But the idea is rather than having coaches come independently and approach us for projects, they're going to do it internally and decide who needs what the most now. Uniform-wise, equipment-wise, coach stipend-wise, nutritional assistance, you know, whatever it is. And they're going to report back to us on how they're spending it.
Coordination is a good thing.
Because we've been trying to do that here and we're not the right people to make those decisions at the DIES. We're better off supporting them. And what I really like about this is this is the gap and we're filling it. And this is exactly what we asked them to come back with. They came back with it.
Well, and there were, but there were five more, six more asks.
I also think that we need to, the the top twenty-four isn't part of this. The stuff underneath it, twenty-four is its own thing.
It's pretty much unrelated.
Yeah, it's unrelated. It shouldn't have been tagged in this. It's not part of this group. It, I don't know why the school district ranked it. I'm glad that they saw a benefit in having us market, you know, the RCA. That that's something we want to do. The other stuff in here, um, you know, it it, these are some of the stuff we want. We wanted the basketball courts. We wanted the hoops. We wanted to be able to do that. I want the, you know, we want the wrestling mats and we want to be able to fund our our sports program to make it beneficial in the city. So first of all, I want to pull the the twenty-four out of this group. And then with that hundred and fifty, are we taught, how much more over to hit to fund this entire group?
The list in front of us is almost three hundred, including twenty-four.
So it's exactly what you.
The list is three hundred and ten, ten thousand.
If you take out the forty-one, what would it be?
Two sixty, two seventy.
Okay, so we're looking at another hundred grand. And it's still cheaper than what you guys were spending or what we were spending as a group at three hundred thousand, correct, for last year?
That was over a three-year period.
So it was a hundred grand?
So there were also other requests.
Other things we were funding.
Okay.
So I would tend to agree that twenty-four is something separate.
Just to add a little context, twenty-four was added primarily because we had heard during previous council discussions specifically about the budget, kind of the need for administrative capacity, which may mean a person or something like that. And so it was really to draw attention to, you know, is it just a marketing plan or is there also a greater need that council saw?
So so you were saying, Donald?
Twenty-six, like, I would be comfortable with trying to see how close we could get to that number. The rest of these would figure out whether or not they would get priority based on, I mean, in this two hundred thousand in theory, they may choose to fund, you know, cross the cross-country team or the wrestling team or whatever. I mean, that, to me, that's, this is a strategic plan to buy banners and replacement of equipment. And I mean, so that's in theory, exactly what David's saying. So we wouldn't necessarily need to be funding the rest of these.
The last three are middle school.
They would need to make their, oh, this is, oh, because the plan is just the high school.
About those last three.
Our recommendation is to make it broader than just Cordova High School, that it should cover Mills, Mitchell, Cordova, Walnut Wood, Kenny. Still come up with a priority, but have a set amount overall per year.
Yeah. And still a hundred and fifty thousand is not.
I think if you, if you applied that same gap question, I mean, if two hundred thousand is roughly approaching the gap, it's not as big as the gap at Folsom. It might be as big as the gap at Vista, you know, just to compare high schools, high school to high school. That might be two hundred thousand, but if you then extended to middle schools or elementary schools, add up all those PTA contributions, in some cases where parents are spending five hundred dollars for uniforms for kids to play a sport, and our parents are putting up nothing, you know, because of the economic gap. That number would be far bigger, is what I'm saying. If you were to look at the gap, middle schools and elementary schools, that's just the high school, one high school. So Peter, maybe you can, maybe you can, maybe you can clarify, clarify like items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, which are, which are Mills or Mitchell?
Mitchell. All right, so I think if you go back to twenty-four with the youth program, and it really does start there. If you're looking to bolster your sports programs across the city, it's got to start at the youth level. If you don't have a viable youth level, it never matriculates to the middle or the high school. So it almost seems like you're putting your money in the, you know, upfront in the wrong place. So I don't know that twenty-four should be tied to the rest of it. I do think it needs to be funded because realistically, when you look at, for instance, Folsom's two thousand and ten second, or state championship football team, they were all together on the Junior Bulldogs and started off together on the Pee Wees and the Midgets before they got to the high school. So without that group really matriculating, that program really never would have gotten off the ground. So realistically, we do need to, you know, put money into our youth programs. Um, and part of the reason why we invested in that is talked about basketball, trying to get that to the level at the elementary schools. And currently, out of the ten elementary schools in our, in the city, only three have viable gym spaces or multis that could be used for basketball. The rest of them do not. So in order to support Mather Sports Complex and working with the Recreation Department, really, we need to have those programs, those schools available to those youth programs to bolster, if nothing else, our basketball, our youth basketball. And I think we've done a pretty good job working through RCA to support that. And hopefully in the fall, we've got less than a hundred right now playing at the Sports Complex. Hopefully in the fall, we'll double that number, if nothing else, using four different sites. Uh, again, it's all based volunteer forms and of course officiating and so forth. So that's kind of the idea, building it at the elementary level. Getting into the high school, David alluded to it, but when Folsom High does a meet the Bulldogs night and they raise seventy thousand dollars, and Cordova does meet the Lancers and they raise five thousand dollars, there's no comparable measure to offset that. There's no way to offset that difference. Uh, Vista and Cordova High are relatively close in numbers as far as student population goes. Give about a hundred or so less at Cordova compared to Vista, but Vista has eight hundred and twenty-two athletes playing sports right now. Cordova has five hundred and twenty-four. There's a, there's a reason for that. We need to bolster the programs. We need to get more kids involved. And what the proposals that we have here in front of you is the idea of doing that. The wrestling team bought a new mat ten years ago. So ten thousand dollars, the thirty-five thousand dollars for the cross-country, we can incorporate that as part of the two hundred thousand dollars that we asked for in number twenty-six. Um, I think that's an easy fix there to support both those programs. The cross-country, there's a lot more work that needs to be done with that one. That's why it was ranked low by the district. There, there's the idea of building a course within that money as well to do, creating, you know, a cross-country course. Well, then we're getting into property and we're getting into property lines, we're getting into architecture, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that's not incorporated there.
When I ran cross-country, you just ran as fast as you can so that you.
Well, that's an idea.
You ran through their property.
Well, what the coach wants to do, we got a young coach, and what he really wants to do is set up an actual course so we can start attracting some other venues here, not just the high school ones, but also the section in the league events as well to have them hosted here at Cordova, especially along the American River access road, access area. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of grandeur thoughts here, but I think we can incorporate some of those things in there to cover the cost. The two hundred thousand dollars, um, as I worked with staff and looked at the plan for Cordova High School, is really to be spread out across the different programs, not one particular sports program or not. It's just to kind of cover a lot of things that need to be done. And I'll give you a simple example. There's a light in the old, in the main gym for the wrestling team. Uh, for the wrestling, you know, they put a spotlight on you. Well, it was made, I believe, around seventy-three, is the history I heard about it. It was using coffee cans and floodlights and they did it in the metal shop with some I-beams and basically hoisted it and stuck it up there.
That's not the best ones are made.
And that's, it's been there since then, as opposed to the kind that you can lower that actually is DSA-approved and should be there, which is about a thirteen hundred dollar cost. You know, so coffee cans and floodlights may have worked back in the seventies. I don't know, they're very safe these days, though. So that's just to give you an example of some of the stuff. The other parts and pieces of this program is really to provide opportunities for these kids to participate in sports at a level that they should be getting. Um, unfortunately, the reality is we don't have the funding to do it from a school district perspective. Uh, this is one of those hidden curriculums that you don't learn in the classroom. This is one you experience on the field, on the courts, you know, whether it's tennis courts or basketball courts, whatever it may be, that we provide for our students and that truly do bolster academics. Reality is, a lot of these kids, um, they suffer from all kinds of emotional distress and the place they get to take it out is in sports, as opposed to getting in trouble somewhere else in the community. And for us to provide these opportunities, it's got to happen. Just to give you examples, we've collected about four thousand dollars in transportation fees from Cordova High School alone. Four thousand dollars. The two middle schools have raised seven thousand dollars each. So there's a huge gap between even the Mills and Mitchell and Cordova High School as far as getting funding-wise for the parents in our community. So it is a challenge. The part of that is forty thousand dollars to cover transportation for them to travel to different places where they're not having the leverage, equipment for transportation cost. When you're having to come up with that kind of money, you've got, you know, taking the kids in the bus, it's the only way you get them there on time. Reality is the safest way. And believe it or not, you know, school buses are still safer than anything else that transportation goes. People see yellow and they get out of the way. So we need to continue to support that. And if we're going to leverage that versus equipment, we got to pay for the buses to get the kids to the event. So that's what we've been doing for years, and that's been the disconnect. The other part of it is obviously getting the, um, the the school itself on a plan so that it's structured over a period of time. And that was difficult when they didn't have someone in place to support it and oversee it and to make sure that's what's taking place. This way, when they do have these things, in place of cross-country coming to you or wrestling team, they would go to one central location and to follow that plan and work within that. So the idea of the ten thousand dollar mat, um, actually, the funding for that, or the the cost of that, they originally had about fifteen thousand dollars. I was able to get it down to ten thousand dollars through some networking and some leveraging with companies that we work with. We just purchased one for Mitchell, told that company, hey, we just bought one from you. We want to buy another one. We want the same cost, but a bigger mat for Cordova High School. And they're willing to do it. So we can do that when we network and we pool our resources from one central location versus trying to have each group leverage their own. So we're trying to minimize the cost, but we're also trying to maximize the buck that we have that we work worth. So hopefully that helps a little bit. I know, Terry, you've got some questions for me.
He's just going to ask about wrestling.
No, 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 no. You answered it. That's what, that's what I was.
Why do you want to keep our kids on coffee cans, Donald?
So the the safety cushions for Mitchell?
Yeah, those, we, the Mitchell part of it, I can incorporate part of that into this. If you're doing it as one lump sum to the district, we could work some of that. The the hoisting machine, that's, believe it or not, it's just using old hand crank. They just want an electric button, hit the button to make the thing go up and down.
So here's, here's the thing that people know are probably thinking. You're the school district. You got a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. You're telling us you can't buy safety equipment, right? That's what people are thinking.
Right, well, this is not a safety equipment. You know, this is a luxury. They asked for it, to be honest with you. I rejected it and I don't know. That's probably why I got number twelve on the list.
No, I mean the, uh, the cushions.
The cushions, uh, those are not part of F and E. When you do measure, for instance, we did measure P or the measure before that in regards to the remodelization. As you remember, they went through and they did elementary schools, middle schools, then they got to high school and went to pass measure A, P, just to get the high school partially completed, not fully. As they went through and they got closer to the high school, they got to the middle schools, they started cutting corners. And that was one of the areas that we cut. We used, uh, you know, old gymnastic mats and we used grommets and put them against the walls. Well, they're not the best. The kids are getting behind them. They're getting all cut up and they're, it's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They weren't designed for that. So we tried to make something out of it that, you know, shouldn't have been there in the first place. This, realistically, we do need it for the basketball cushions. The wrestling room, we can do a little bit difference, uh, make that up a little bit different. And the fifteen hundred dollars for the hoisting electronic deal, that's something we don't need to work with, to be honest with you. That was just put in there and that's why I got such a low rating. You know, if that's the school that really wants to do that, then they can fundraise for hoisting. You know, if that's the school that really wants to do that, then they can fundraise for hoisting their baskets.
So the reality is, for physical improvements at the other end of the district, it's parent dollars, it's money they raise at the gate, you know, selling tickets to see games.
Right. Our homecoming game this year with Cordova against Florin, Florin brought four visitors. That's not enough to pay for the people watching them to come to the game. You know, I mean, all the security guards and so forth, we paid for, and just wasn't worth it. I mean, four people. Part of that 200, 2,000 was to incorporate security through the Rancho Cordova Police Department. I mean, that's about $10,000 cost at five games a year. That's what we paid for. So that's been coming out of ASB accounts. So the students are fundraising to do things for the school, and they're having to pay for security to cover for the football game. Because the football boosters just don't make that kind of funds. You know, the gate money, the revenue does not make that enough to cover it all. Realistically, Folsom High raised about $250,000 with their booster club, and Vista about $350,000 through their booster clubs. Cordova doesn't even have a booster club. We've got to work on rebuilding that and getting some people back in and supporting themselves. But that's a tough thing to do when you've had turnover, turnover over so many years.
That's why we have Measure H.
And to be honest with you, I'm hoping that the city of Folsom passes Measure E, which would be equivalent of Measure H there, because they are in the same boat, they're just in different areas.
Yeah, they got a lot different of an electorate, too.
Yeah.
I've been trying to give it, I've been selling the idea of a Measure H there for, since we passed this one.
It wasn't written very well. It wasn't written as well as Measure H as part of the challenge.
Yeah, well.
But in regards to the one, the third of the community that's not participating because they're in different schools and so forth, realistically, those are the youth levels, those aren't necessarily at the high school level. Elk Grove's funding source is completely different. For instance, they give athletics $3.4 million for athletics through their school district. That's because that's big enough, whereas our district, we're giving about a half a million dollars, about 505,000, complete to cover all of our athletic programs in our district.
Yeah.
Can't compare.
Well, on the flip side, I would say Elk Grove's, what's the, what's the student population of Folsom-Cordova, 20,000?
Well, that's the difference. They've got 10 high schools and 10 middle schools, whereas we've got three high schools and four middle schools.
There are over 60,000 students, too.
And then Walnutwood, Prospect, and Kenny, they don't necessarily have sports per se. I know they've got a couple of programs, a basketball program at Kenny that they do, and that's, you know, I don't know what the cost factor there is. I don't have a clue, because I haven't talked to Michelle, but.
Principal told me about $1,200.
Yeah. I mean, throw that into 202, we can cover it. If they need 1,200 bucks, we can cover it for a stipend most likely.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I would be of the mindset right now, keep the 200,000 on the list. The rest of them, they would need to go to the district to figure out how to get funding, or which ones would get funding, and then figure out how to fund the 40 on that. So we're looking, instead of 150, we're like 250.
So we would, yeah, we would fund 24 and 26 at request, and the rest has to be followed in.
Yeah. Yep.
Except for the basketball cushions.
Well, I mean, let the school district decide if that's what they want to fund. But I, I would say,
Wrestling mats.
We, we can't make this a five-year commitment.
Right.
So next year, we'd come back, reevaluate what our resources are, if that's less or more.
Well, just so you know, we did do a needs assessment for Cordova High School specifically, and prioritized, we had about 36 items on that needs assessment. And we prioritized those things, and that's what we would tackle first, the priorities, to make sure that, you know, we got things covered. Wrestling mat and the cross country was on that priority as well.
Well, and if the mats are in good shape, then maybe it is the light that you need to buy or whatever. But again, I'd rather you make that decision. And again, we're going to have to find savings somewhere else to pay for it, but.
But the really great news, I mean, for years of struggling with this issue, is now we have a Peter. I mean, we had him before as a middle school principal, but now we have an athletic director at the district level. Whereas before, it was sort of each site, each coach, each athletic director of the individual school for themselves. There was no, there was no coordination.
Right. We can make this work a lot easier, having a central location to coordinate and, and to support each group and what they're trying to do within, you know, parameters that we have to work with.
Well, you're going to earn your salary back just through efficiency.
I think I already earned my salary already through compliance and complaints, trust me.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
For clarification from council, is that 202,000 plus the $500 for one single year, and then we would reevaluate?
Yes, that's.
Yes, that's what I want to do.
Okay, thank you. I also have a speaker card for this item, Rod Borba. Okay.
Good man. Appreciate you.
So moving on to page 18, the first two items are education-related items that would both potentially take place at Navigator Elementary School. The first is the Boys and Girls Club, which has been operating at Navigator this past school year. And then the second item is called the Assist Structured Sports and Character Education Class. That program has also been operating at Navigator for approximately one year, but was funded in the past through Title I funds. And the reason why we pulled this out is we're just doing a check-in with council on the overall funding level with Boys and Girls Club and the long-term investments that you may or may not want to make regarding something like a club. So we're recommending $50,000, and for instance, the Boys and Girls ask is for 100,000 for one year.
What was our funding level in, it was last year?
50 in fiscal year 1819. Their request this year does have an additional item, which is a summer component. And we felt a summer component may not be necessary, given that we're recommending funding for other summer engagement programs through the district.
So, so the location of this is still puzzling to me, at Navigator Elementary. How did they, how did they end up at Navigator?
Because that's the one that's willing to take them. The problem, the problem is, the way their model tends to work, and they can probably speak to this, is to offer after-school programming, you need to be contracted to do that. Folsom-Cordova pays themselves and has their own ACES program that's after-school. So there's not necessarily somewhere for them to.
So there's no other, no other opening? Because if we were ranking needy schools, this would not be the top of the list. This would be the bottom of the list for neediness. Unless this is a homeless service program, right?
No, it's not.
No.
It's not.
Well, I mean, that's homeless.
But Folsom-Cordova's not offering, I'm guessing they're not offering ACES at that site. Right? Sure.
ACES is offered. I don't know if Linda's still here, but I believe in the past, they haven't been able to fully have an ACES program on the site, and instead they were using the funding to do more like STEM programs during the summer.
So Navigator is not funded by the State of California to have the ACES After-School Education and Safety Program. They will probably never qualify for the state grant, just because.
Because it's affluent.
Well, it's actually borderline 50% free and reduced, eligible free and reduced. So it could get to that point if they had, if the school had existed when the ACES funding first came out, because they funded all schools down to 50% free and reduced. But after that, they're not funding lower than like 85%. So Navigator will probably never qualify for the state grant. So we think it's a huge benefit, especially for the kids from Mather Community Campus that are attending at Navigator, to be able to have access to an after-school program at that site. And they've been doing a really good job there.
So, okay, just reading the first sentence. It's for 2019 to 2020 school year, and then only the summer months in 2020.
Correct.
So what happens to the summer months in 2019?
My guess would be that it would be too soon to do it.
Right, we wouldn't be funded. I just wanted to answer the question about why we were at Navigator. So the school district asked us to be there. That was the school when we sat down with them and looked at all of the schools. We toured other schools and we were asked to go to Navigator. So we have been having a really successful year there. We have been working really hard, building brand awareness in Rancho Cordova and developing partnerships, and those partnerships have helped to supplement the program at Navigator. We're matching with the 50,000 that we received last year. We're matching over 50% to fund the program. We're not able to do a summer program with that. Our request for next year did include a summer program and also a career readiness program and summer job placement. But really, with the recommendation from staff, what I'm here to request is just that our funding not be reduced from the $50,000 so that we can continue the work that we're doing at Navigator. We've brought in several new partnerships from Rancho Cordova since we've been there, which has been incredible. And so we know that the city is happy that we're there, and we've worked really hard to supplement the program, to have a really robust program at Navigator. And we want to continue to do that while exploring other options to expand club services throughout the city, and whether that be with the Civic Center project or another location. We also, I mean, we have 100 registered members there at Navigator and a waiting list. And we did also, because of the work that we've done there, received our charter from Boys and Girls Clubs of America.
So you have a chartered Boys and Girls Club of Rancho Cordova?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I would.
Thank you.
I would stay, I, I think at the $50,000 level for now, and I think as we have more conversations about whatever community facility it looks like, I mean, obviously they're an ideal partner for, for working with us there. And as much as 52 sounds really nice, I just think that let's, let's fund the Boys and Girls Club and continue to, you know, work together to try to build that brand awareness, because, and I've said this before, that national brands like theirs, especially if we were to look at a community facility of some sort, are a huge benefit in fundraising, especially with a business park here that is not used to giving in this city, because they're used to giving to brand names. And I think continuing to build a relationship with you, I think, will help us in our ability to try to tap into more of this business.
And I don't know if you're interested in some of the names, I mean, even new partners for us since we've been here, but Pizza Guys that's headquartered here, Power Crunch, Optum 360, Old Navy, Sedgwick, Michaels, and Dignity Health. I mean, they've all been doing wonderful things, and also their employees getting involved and going to the school. I mean, it's just been, the, the feedback and the support has been phenomenal.
Yeah.
What percent of your kids come from Mather Community Campus?
What's that?
What percent of your kids come from Mather Community Campus? Do you have any idea?
I'm not sure.
Transitional housing center that.
You know.
The school serves.
I'll get some numbers tomorrow. I'm having a meeting with the people from Mather Community Campus.
So I can't necessarily speak to the percentage from Mather Community Campus, but to what Linda was talking about earlier in terms of the free and reduced population, 75% of the kids that we have fall into that, or the 100 registered members fall into that free and reduced, free and reduced population.
Do they register with addresses with you when they become members? Do they have to put a home address?
Yeah, yeah, so we could put that together.
Yeah, you probably could cross-reference, because there's only, they're all at, at like two addresses.
Right.
There'd be a lot of, a lot of turnover of those kids every nine months or so.
That stays longer than that.
Is it longer than that?
It's up to two years, I thought.
How do the kids get there?
It might be as long as two years.
To the program? It's, it's right after school, so they're, it's on campus, so they're right out of school.
So it's really only the kids at Navigator?
It is, right now.
Yes.
Bob says it's a one-year max program.
It used to be two, it's one.
Okay, it's changed, okay.
And then some don't make it all the way through. That's probably where the nine months got stuck in my head.
Yeah. But again, their success breeds success for us throughout the city. I mean, a handful of those names, we all have heard, we, we know they're here, they're just not giving here. So I, I'd be comfortable staying at the staff's recommendation and then just not funding 52.
So if you're working to build your brand identity in Rancho Cordova, and it really is, and, and you're, you're going to stay at Navigator, then how would you attract, how would you get other kids down there?
Well, the idea is that we need to move beyond Navigator. And that is either to be on other school campuses or potentially part of the Civic Center project in a community center-based program, where we're attracting kids from six years old to 18 years old into our program.
But that takes a community facility somewhere, not, so mo- most of the kids you serve don't go to the, the Tygart Center or the other ones, right? You're serving them at school campuses.
It's both.
Throughout the region, though, I mean.
But we do both.
Right, right, but, but the program that you're offering right now is a site-based program based on working with Folsom-Cordova, and they identified wanting them at Navigator.
The only.
Because they don't, they don't have funding for a similar program.
The only other way that we would be able to potentially attract other kids would be during a summer program. I mean, you would offer that first to Navigator students, but other district students potentially. I mean, whatever the partnership would be with the school. And then you're opening it up to older kids to participate as counselors or working at the summer camp, things like that.
So you said your match was 50%. Does that mean raising 25 or 50,000 a year to support the site?
What we're currently doing now, it's over 50%. So I think it's at, we're at 115,000 is what the program costs us at Navigator right now.
That is a great match.
They're drawing in $65,000.
See, I would term that as more than 100% match. For every dollar we're giving you, you're coming up with more than 100% of that.
Yeah.
From your perspective of a budget, 50% of yours is, yeah.
Yeah, you're about 120%.
Yeah.
That's.
That's a very good result.
Really, really good.
But obviously, our goal ultimately is to, to stay at Navigator would be great, but to move beyond Navigator.
So from a timing perspective, I, again, I would be comfortable with the 50,000 now. And I think maybe even before we open up Measure H for next year, because that's really when we, I mean, ultimately, the funding becomes available the end of June, you're going to start a little bit before that, but maybe we can come up between now and then. And we've had some instances where we've, we've had some savings, or some projects to move forward. That happens a lot less now, because you guys do a better job than we did in the beginning. They do a better job than when we started this. But maybe this is something that later in 2019, we can say, oh, okay, now we're moving towards it. You could, you know, this is how much it's going to cost, and have you go and market it and try to supplement the grant later.
To potentially be open for summer?
For summer of 2020.
Oh, okay.
Because, because ultimately, most of that time is going to be the next fiscal year, not this one.
Right.
Because I, because I want to give you a fighting chance to do a summer program, because I think that, that's better for all of us. But again, we're, we're already over budget with the stuff we've started to spend. So I'd be comfortable, again, doing 50,000 for the item 51 and not funding 52.
Yeah.
So that's one person.
Question about the 50. You were talking earlier about a summer program. Is that something you wouldn't be able to do if you just got the 50,000?
Right.
Because I mean, the, the school districts are not doing summer programs or summer anything. And I thought initially, before we got to the 50,000, we had the other, we're looking at, was there a summer program maybe from Boys and Girls Club? But we're limited on our money also, and it's a shame, everything has to depend on the buck.
But you couldn't do, but you couldn't do a summer program until 2020 anyway.
Right.
Right.
I, I think we continue to talk about the summer program in the next, because it's not premature to commit to the funding now, but it's, it's pretty early considering most of it, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be spending it in this fiscal year, you're going to spend it in the next one. But your, your ratch, your, your buildup for it is going to be this time next year.
Right.
So two of us are comfortable with the 50,000. I don't know if, okay. And then let's keep talking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we have 50,000 towards Boys and Girls Club, and then we've listed zero for item 52. So bringing us to the last two items, these are not related to one another. The first one is item 59, which is Cordova Community Food. The first one is item 59, which is Cordova Community Food Locker. And this request for, was for various facility upgrades, as well as some equipment. Staff does need some additional time to determine if what they requested actually included things such as prevailing wage or some of the other costs that we don't believe was factored into their request. Our preliminary recommendation is to have 20,000 set aside and allow us the next few weeks to further evaluate what might be able to take place within a one-year period of time. And we can come back with some additional information when we revisit this in May.
I liken this request to the Grange request that we got, where it was like, here's this whole thing that we need, or the Moose Lodge, too, was, was like that, where like, we need all of our plumbing fixed. It was like, the, the, yeah, this is nice, I just think, again, it's one of these ones that we have to study more to figure out what we're actually going to spend on.
Actually, I don't see this like, any of those things. The problem with the food locker is that the whole facility is so disintegrated.
Ramshackle.
Well, that too.
I mean, it, it started small, it grew big.
It did.
They did it efficiently, but not necessarily building for a 50-year horizon.
50 years ago, we would have said it grew like Topsy. But they just sort of added on and added on and added on, and I'm not sure that's even accessible to get up to the, to get, I'm not sure there's even a ramp over there to get up the stairs. But, but it just, the whole, the whole thing, obviously, there's not enough money to scrape and rebuild it, but the whole thing needs to be completely re- and I don't see how you piecemeal it. I mean, if you purchase a large commercial freezer, it probably doesn't have the electrical capacity to keep the thing running.
Well, and if you look at, like, even what the SAC Food Bank has recently done, their old food bank facility is education space now. And they moved their entire warehouse system and everything somewhere else. And they, you can't even really go there and get food anymore, because they go out into the community and they have vans that do it. And they got rid of the wait here and get your box and all that stuff. They completely changed their business model. So maybe at some point, it's talking to them about, let's go find you some-
Find another location.
No, some industrial space for warehousing of food and repurpose the space into something that's more effective and take food to neighborhoods.
Then we combine that with the Chamber of Commerce's need for a food incubator, and we put the whole thing together, and we have, begin to have a project.
It could be a win-win.
Yeah. But I mean, but I mean, the SAC Food Bank, literally, there are eight places, there are eight places that they drop off now throughout the county.
Aren't they at the Army Depot? Isn't their main facility at the Army Depot?
No, you're thinking of California Food Link. That's a big regional one that gives to the restaurant. No, the SAC Food Bank is in Oak Park, right, right off of Broadway. And they had a brick building, and then they built a really fancy new building that has offices and, and classroom spaces and things like that. And their old facility is now just their warehouse, but you don't go there anymore. They bought a fleet of vans, and they go out and drop off stuff. So depending on it, like, maybe we need to talk about a different service delivery model. So, so I, I like the idea of leaving 20,000 there and talking more about this and seeing if we can't come up with a workable solution. Because I'm not as familiar with the facility as you are, I'm just saying that the, the models of these things have changed a lot recently.
The problem with the Cordova Food Locker, it's the same thing with the Sacramento Food Bank. They're being told that they have to spend money paying their volunteers and other things. And how in the world you're going to have a nonprofit like the Sacramento Food Bank or the Cordova Food Locker, and you're depending on volunteers, and then you have the state and maybe the federal, too, I'm not sure which, is also saying they have to spend a lot of money that they don't really have, and that's both of them. Cordova Food Locker and Sacramento Food Bank. And they're both in trouble as far as that's concerned, because they're being told they have to spend money they don't have. And they end up, end up with both of them being shut down.
Yeah.
Which would be a really disaster as far as the people are concerned.
Lawyers always ruin the fun.
So I recommend, I recommend the staff recommendation.
Yeah.
And, because that basically says further staff analysis is needed, but we're willing to commit 20,000 to something.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
And I think, I, I agree with, with the staff on the Children's Museum, they're still working on their plan that they're supposed to be bringing back.
Yeah, me too.
There were two items that you had asked to add to the list that didn't require further research, so I'm not sure if you're wanting to discuss them this evening or night, or not, which is items 39 and 72.
What were those?
So 39 is on page seven. That was potentially the garden project at Prospect Community Day School.
Yeah, I'd like staff to work with them to see if we can come up with a price to start a garden program there of some sort, what that price would be. And I know you said it's 10 grand, if there's something in between there, because-
And does it work with soyborne, whatever deal we have with-
Well, they would have, yeah, they'd have to in some way. Because this is kind of one of, this is like the one-off, right? Somebody wanted to do a garden and doesn't know what else we're doing.
Yep.
Okay, so we can-
What was the other one?
And the other item is 72, which is on page 13.
39 was the one we were just looking at, Mr. Maynor.
Oh, sorry. 39.
Go back up.
What was the other one?
72.
We're going the wrong direction.
Am I going up?
Everyone is 72.
Now go down. Go down. She did up by the number up. You got to go down when it's self-reserving.
Where do you want, you got 72?
Go to 72.
The page has to go up. I'm sorry, scroll down.
72. Go, go, no, no.
This is over there.
Over there. There you go.
Alcohol.
Oh, God. So that was the application from party or prevent alcohol and risk-related trauma in There was some talk of potentially taking a reduced budget from the field trip fund, but you had asked to just park it for the moment.
So the, the plan after tonight, this, this was the conversation today, right? So I think, things like this, and then how much over-budget are we going to go in this? Because we have every year, basically, done that. So is the question going to be, are we parking this for now and then deciding what we're taking a bite out of the other items?
I think we're close to a wrap.
On this?
Yeah.
But then, at the next meeting, we're going to have to figure out where we're taking it from, if it's transportation or if it's something else, right?
Oh, I have a proposal.
What?
I have a proposal. I have no idea how much we're over by. I would just propose, we have two large pools of money that we allocated early on, economic development and public works. I would just say-
Could do the same thing we've done-
This is what we do every year, take half from each, just reduce their proportions, and fill in whatever we just went over.
So let's, let's do this. Here's my suggestion. I'm not, I wouldn't say no to that.
Both departments are in the rear.
Huh?
Both departments are in the back.
They are, yeah.
Are they rears?
No, not a rears.
In the rear of the room.
Rear of the room, in the back of the room.
So I think, considering the hour, why don't, why don't we let staff with this direction so fund this? Would that be a yes? Are there two people that would agree with me on funding 72?
72.
So fund it, and then let staff bring us back at the next meeting, what that looks like, how much we're over, and then let's have that conversation, David. I don't think it'll take very long.
It shouldn't take very long. And we, do we have other stuff, though, also on that board?
There's a few items that we need to do some additional research on, and we'll need to bring it back. So that would-
Do that at our next meeting. And then, and then that'll give us, that'll give them time to actually quantify it. And, because other times, we've done this, and was, oh, okay, we're now 250 over, and then, as we start to put together these contracts, they may change.
Were there other dollar figures on that wall? I mean, 20 versus 30 for the light parade?
There's the light parade, and then there's two she had to do some research on.
The wrestling club, I believe, was like 8,500.
You're not on.
Yeah, turn on your mic.
Wrestling club, she had to go figure out.
Sorry, I believe the wrestling club was 8,500. The garden, we said somewhere, but they, they asked for six, but we said we typically have spent 10.
You know-
We had chat.
Research more of the wrestling club. I think the 200 grand that we just committed is probably going to be sufficient, because it's supporting the high school, which, that's-
But it wouldn't activate a club. It'd be a separate nonprofit. They'll spend that on sports in-house versus support.
Yeah, but we don't know, we don't know enough about, we don't know enough about that club, about whether it's-
We don't know.
Opened everybody or exclusive or what.
And traditionally, those are held at the high school, so they're using their mats and all their-
So we're giving them a better facility.
But this one was to take place at Mather.
Mitchell.
No. It said it was at Mitchell, but that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, how about go do the research on it?
Yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and research it.
Were any of them bigger dollar figures? I mean, if they add them up, are they under 100?
Um-
If we funded everything, there was a maybe list?
Probably. That'd probably be about right. We did have the van that the-
That's going to get funded one way or the other.
That Kenny and-
But how we fund it?
Right.
But they, that they wanted it shared. So probably-
Again, I, I would say, let them do the research. Let them, let them quantify what we, what they think we just told them. And then let's see what that number looks like against the rest of the 8.1 at the next meeting. Would that be okay?
I'm all right with that. Add 72 to the list and come back with what we've got, what our total is.
Yeah. So Stacy can take a, a few pages out of that binder.
Yes, I can. It'll be lighter when I come back on May 20.
A little bit. I don't, I don't think we cut a ton, but some.
So just a reminder, council, that-
That was the most efficient move we've ever done.
The next council meeting on May 6th is canceled because of the two-cap-to-cap trip. So the next opportunity that the council will have to discuss this item would be on, at the meeting on May 20th. Just-
Can I ask just some clarification? Because I brought something up about SAC City Unified.
You should go find out about that.
So I have pricing, which we've given to, to, which has been given to Stacy. So the idea, and again, I'm just going to briefly explain it. There were a bunch of different options, as much as 75,000 would, would have been a summer school catch-up course for incoming first graders, incoming third graders, and incoming seventh graders. That would cost 75,000. Or we could fund credit recovery programs just at George Washington Carver for 36,000. But again, if we don't step in, kind of like you were just saying, the inequities that we have between Folsom and Cordova High are one thing, the inequities that our, those schools comparatively to everything else in our city is, could end up being very dramatic.
Okay, so personally, because George Washington Carver is a completely unique animal in the educational world, and I, and I, I'm not sure why-
Doesn't just serve residents.
No, but I'm not sure why those kids need credit recovery. You know, it seems to me that if you're going to a school like, like Carver, where you're there for, for a very specific interest, that you should be plucking along all four years, okay? It strikes me that, that it, something that we could do for elementary school kids-
I would, I would tend to agree with you.
AMWynn or Abraham Lincoln would be much more valuable.
Yeah. And it would be at one of the school sites, but it would serve the whole neighborhood. So the idea would be-
Right.
You activate Lincoln for the summer, kids from AMWynn would be able to go there, too. And these would only be student, these would be targeted students that are performing below grade level.
Actually, I'd do it the other way around, simply because it's easier for, it's easier for the kids on the east side to walk over to, to access AMWynn.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not picking, I'm just giving you the easy-
But, 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 it's my, it's my experience that the elementary schools in SAC City Unified perform based on the personnel at the site and the different programs, the different categorical funded programs that have been assigned to those, you know, whether they're priority schools or something like that, or Title I schools or whatever.
They don't have priority schools anymore, as far, as far as I know.
Okay, so, so it seems like elementary would be the way to go.
Okay.
I want to find out from all my council members, are you satisfied with what we've done tonight on this? And we're going to come back to some of those things, but for right now, once we pass, you're happy with those?
I am. I just, I just want to get some clarification, because this is something that the superintendent specifically asked during our, our two-by-two. This was, this was his goal to do for the, the whole district. This was his one real reform thing he wanted to do, and it's the thing he had to give up.
There's no way, since we paid for it, that we could have our other school districts[1719.69]